Vivian, could you start the recording for us, please?
Done, yep. Hi, everybody.
Okay. Good evening all and welcome to the November 12th, 2024 meeting of the City of Boulder Planning Board. Our first order of business tonight is public participation. And public participation is for anyone to speak on any matter other than the two public hearings that we have for tonight. So if you want to speak either online or here in person, you have a sign up here in person and Vivian will walk us through the procedure for speaking online and here. So take it away, Vivian.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name's Vivian Castro Woolridge and I help facilitate public participation. We have at least one person joining us virtually and maybe some others that are there with you in person. So I'll just run through these slides quickly. You can go to the next one. Thomas. So first, we just want to share that the city is engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful and inclusive civic conversations. And this vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff and board commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences and perspectives. And we have more information about the productive atmospheres vision on our website. Next slide, please. And I'll just share some concrete examples of rules of decorum in the Boulder Revised Code that support this vision. And these will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. And we ask that all persons wishing to participate in open, common or public hearing identify themselves by first and last name. Next slide, please. And to let us know, this is particularly if you're joining us online, please raise your virtual hand so we know to call on you. And you can do that by clicking on the hand icon at the bottom of your screen or also, next slide, please, going to the reactions button and then finding the raised hand that way. So that's it for the rules of public participation. And if there's anyone who wishes to speak during this part of the meeting, which is speaking to agenda items that are not you may raise your virtual hand now. Or Thomas, you can let me know if anybody in person wishes to speak.
Thank you, Vivian. We do have one person here signed up in person for open comment. And that is
Great, let's
Skamp, please go ahead and approach the podium. Just so you know, there is a small silver rectangular button. Press that to turn the microphone on. There you go.
My name is David Olskamp, co-owner of 1590 Hawthorne. My name is David Olskamp. I am co-owner of 1590 Hawthorne Avenue, which we purchased in May 2024. The house is part of the Orchard PUD, if that rings any bells. We're about to have our first HOA meeting and the agenda circulate ahead of time includes an agenda item about LUR 2023-57, the final frontier, as they dubbed it. Thought I'd fully dive into the history of the item to ensure that I could actively participate in that HOA discussion. My findings and interactions have been disturbing to the extent that I thought you'd want to know about them. I watched recordings of both meetings at which the board previously discussed the matters. As for the board's conduct, I commend your deliberations. You asked great questions and the overall discussion was quite thoughtful. However, there are fundamental flaws with the information you were provided in both the city's memo and the verbal responses to your questions. I'll run through four of these items. This will be a rapid fire, given the time constraints. Anyone that wasn't at those meetings is going to have no idea what I'm talking about, but hopefully you guys do. Number one, the shed permit. As you may recall, there were questions about how the heck the city issued a building permit for the prior owners to build a shed on land they didn't own. Turns out, the 1997 permit on which those discussions were based had nothing to do with LUR 2023-57. It was a permit for a different shed on a neighboring lot, 1570 Hawthorne, not the relevant lot, which is 1576 Hawthorne. I place into record, I will post hoc because of the rules. The permit documents provided by Chandler, the city planner, he sent them to me a couple of days ago and then we were in contact this morning. Number two, Hawthorne Court HOA, the 15th Street Connector. Another discussion item was the pathway from the Orchard Central gazebo to play area and the HOA's boundary. Missing from that entire discussion, which went on for a little bit and kind of was about, is it a good connection to other things? And was this envisioned as a connection to other things? Absent from that discussion was the fact that Hawthorne Court HOA wasn't even built until 1980s. So our, the Orchard was in the 70s. One next to it, you guys were asking all the questions about, that was 1980s. As an aside, that's how I got here tonight, over the common pathway on the connector to Broadway, and then I walked the rest of the way. Item three, statements from neighbors. Two or three people who provide statements have their own encroachments on the HOA's common areas, and third person may have lacked the mental capacity to fully understand her options, actions, and to provide proper consent. Item number four, owner encroachments. In the memo, basically it was like, oh, the current owners that bought 2017, they didn't do any encroachments. I want you to record the real estate listing from 2017. Certain items just don't appear out of thin air. You guys can look at the photos as they speak for themselves. To ask, you halt the action relating to this LUR 2023-57 and you investigate how these failures even happened in the first place so we can learn from them. That's it.
Yeah. Do you have, it seemed like you have some documentation and so forth. Can you send that to Boulder Planning? Is it Boulder Planning Board? Well, the planning board email address, which I'm sure we can
I can send them. I also have 10 copies for y'all right here.
Sure. I think we'd be welcome to receive them now. That'd be great.
Okay. So the first set here, as I said, this is essentially the permit documents I got from Chandler. And basically, you can look through them. They have 1570 on there. I don't know how this oversight, the explanation I got from Chandler this morning was, if you look at the Boulder County website, basically there's a house that's 1570, which is the people that submit this. And then the common areas, basically they need some label or something. So one of the common areas, the play area, was also labeled as 1570, even though it has nothing to do with that individual property. And so Chandler, he thought that this had to do with the 1576. But in fact, if you look at the applicants, their names, it has to do with a totally different property, the neighboring lot, which is 1570. And I also have here, if we, I didn't know how much we want to go into this, but Chandler's response was, oh, like, no, this is related to what we care about. And I said, like, look at the owners' names. It's basically, look at the two names there, I think it's Wolf and Sacks. I went back and looked at who owned the property and they own 1570, as it says, not 1576. I have all of those documents there, I can share them too.
Okay. I thank you. And I, just to follow procedure, we're not really designed to have a back and forth in the public engagement section. However, I think we will all take an interest in this and trust staff to
We'll follow up. Does Chandler have your contact information? I don't understand what the concern is specifically tonight, so I would love to sit down and meet with you to understand what the actual concern is and how we
Basically, the information that this board was given was fundamentally flawed and that could determine the outcome of that conversation. My discussions with Chandler have been this. I called
I'm sorry, can I?
Does he have your contact info?
I would say I would like it to be someone else besides Chandler, based on his discussions. He basically said, I did a lot of work that you go through.
I'm going to let you and Charles, outside of this room, in a different context, work that out. But we do have your contact info. Is that correct?
You guys do. I've got all the information.
I think, I think that's all we can do for right now.
Great. Thank you. Are we okay to move on to the online participants?
One second, Vivian. Can I just say, you are welcome to send anything that you want to us via email, like send us a copy of your remarks. I also would like to make sure, is it the Boulder Planning Board that reviewed this or the Board of Zoning Adjustment? Because we don't usually deal with garden sheds.
It was the Planning Board.
It was the Planning Board, okay.
So yeah. Basically, the one thing I will say is that apparently this is at its final steps and I'm asking if you just do a pause on those developments so it does not get approved.
We're going, we're going to, we're going to pause here and encourage you to work with staff. And if, if it needs to come back to us, again, it's got to be done. Actually, your chances of seeing a result would be jeopardized if we did anything differently other than follow the, follow the procedures we need to in our, in our public meeting. Okay? That's, so I'm just, thank you. Okay. Thank you for your comments. Vivian, do we have anyone online that wishes to speak?
Yes, we do. Lynn Segal, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
What you need to do is follow less procedure. This whole thing spent a lot of my tax money on people not communicating with each other. That's a problem that the city has all over. And right now, I'm in a hotel in North Boulder because I can't be in my own house where there are two bedrooms for me because of anxiety between me and David Hashamaji, the energy smart guy for Boulder County, who decided he was going to gaslight me 12 years ago. And there was an energy retrofit thing then, and I went forward with it and I found out that the provider that I wanted got dropped. I asked why. He did not tell me. I called the developer, I mean, the vendor that did solar panels. This was, solar panels done for someone else. And Boulder County insisted on having the solar panels installed under adverse conditions that would have threatened the vendor with liability and damages. And this is a big problem. There is so much corruption in the county and the city and miscommunication. And that last guy that spoke is just the beginning of it. You've got to start to just listen to each other and just casual communication. Less procedure, less going by the book. You know, I have a hole now in my living room wall because there needs to be access for my hot, my hot water heater that has a heat pump in it. And why? I can pull out my refrigerator in three minutes and that's perfectly good access for that hot water heater. But no, you're going by code and code. There's no exceptions to code. There's a 2,000 pound entertainment center blocking that wall. I will never use that access door that's depleted the value of my property by about $200,000 because who wants a living, a door in their living room? Going to nowhere, never being used. This is how the City of Boulder operates. Oh, it's code. So now I find out, finally, I could have even put this hot water heater in another part of my property, finish that, that space. It would have had good ventilation. They wouldn't have had to do this constrained job they're doing in a small space. These heat pump hot water heaters need a lot of ventilation, seven by 10 feet. They're putting it in a less than three foot place. And you know what Boulder Housing Partners did? They put a whole bunch of these in for people that can't afford them anyway. They don't work efficiently because they installed them improperly and those people are now burdened with more fees. Shucks, is this good policy? Hello, Planning Board. What are you doing? Developing Alpine balsam, the planning reserve. See you south. You know, is there any place you don't want to develop? Because you know what, in North Boulder, there's no vitality here, zero.
Thank you, Lynn Segal, for joining. If other members of the public joining us online would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your virtual hand. I noticed some of you joined after I read the rules of participation. So if you do wish to speak for the public hearing later, you can change your name to include your last name here or send your, your full name to me through the Q and A and I can do it for you. Okay. I think that ends open comment. Back over to your chair.
Thank you, Vivian. Before we close the public hearing, I'm going to make a short comment and I'm going to offer a time for anyone else. But my comment is that we have just concluded a national election, state and local elections. And we will have a peaceful transfer of power. And this election has me thinking about the conduct of us as a board, staff and the City of Boulder because politics is local. And in my time on the planning board, I have come to realize that this particular staff, this particular board adheres to the rule of law. And I think that that, in the way we judge things and the way we approve or deny things, it's important. And it's important that we do it in little old Boulder, in an almost empty hearing room, just as important as we do it in our, in our nation's capital. And adherence to the rule of law gives us a structure and gives us a way to disagree and to strive for outcomes that are good for the community as a whole. And when we have disagreements and when we have outcomes that we feel are deficient or shortchanged, one particular group or another, we have the opportunity to change those rules and that law. But we stick to the rule of law. And I think, I think we do an exemplary job and I want to commend the city as a whole, the staff and this board. So that's my comment for tonight. So thank you all. Anyone else? Okay. All right. We are going to move on. We're going to close the public participation. We are going to approve, we're going to move to approve minutes. And, and then this board is going to take a break, a quick 15 minute dinner break, and then we'll proceed with the, the rest of the hearing. So we're going to move on to approval of the minutes. Item 3A, the May 20, May 21st, 2024 Planning Board Minutes. Does anyone have any final changes or corrections or a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Again, seeing no other debate, we'll take a vote. And this will also give me an opportunity. I failed to take attendance, so we will note our attendance as we go down the line here. So ML?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Laura?
I'm not going to vote because I was absent, but I am present.
Okay. Claudia?
Yes.
And Mason? Okay. Mason?
Can you all hear me?
His
Oh, I can like barely hear him.
Oh. No, we can't hear you, Mason.
Can you hear me now? Hey, sorry about that. Yes.
Okay. So the May 20, thank you, Mason. The May 21st, 2024 minutes are approved. Now, moving on to the July 16th, 2024 minutes. Any final changes or corrections there? Okay. What's that? I excuse me, just a moment. I'm Thomas, were those the ones that I made the change to?
Yes, the July 16th.
Did you issue a second set of those?
I made changes and updated them in the packet.
In, so the, okay. Okay.
And I'll note that I also submitted some edits and I assume that those were uploaded.
Yes, I put those in and updated the packet before the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I, I'm sorry for pausing here, but I okay, I see my changes. Thank you. Okay. How about a motion to approve the July 16th minutes?
Motion?
Second.
Okay. All right. Claudia?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Those are approved. Item 3C, the August 27th, 2024 Planning Board Minutes. Any final discussion or comment there?
I'll just note that I also submitted some changes to that set. So assuming those are incorporated.
That should be also reflected in the current packet.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve. Laura, you got your mic on?
Move to approve the August 27th, 2024 Planning Board Minutes.
Sick.
Okay. And Laura?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And I'm a yes also. Okay. We have reached, we have no call ups. And so now we're to Agenda Item 5 and I'm going to call a recess in the meeting for 15 minutes. And Thomas, if you could put that up on the, on the web
So just starting at the top, since we haven't had a discussion about natural medicine. What is natural medicine? At the moment, in Colorado, it's defined as psilocybin, which is a substance that's derived from mushrooms. It's a psychedelic substance. It's used to treat mental health issues or mental illness. It's medicinal purposes only, so there's no retail component of this like we had with marijuana. There is a specific definition that is in the state code that lists a number of other substances. I'm not the best at pronouncing them. Dimethyltryptamine, ibogaine, and mescaline are other substances that the state is looking into. Right now, it's psilocybin. It's possible that those other substances that doesn't include peyote could become legal as well in the future, potentially in twenty twenty six. But they all fall under this definition of of natural medicine. So whatever local regulation we put into play would actually be under the definition of natural medicine as it's defined by the state moving forward. But right now, it's just psilocybin. We have some pictures of of the mushrooms that you can see where the substance is derived from. So a little bit of history on this. You probably do recall voting on Proposition one twenty two in twenty twenty two. That was called access to psychedelic substances. Again, it was passed by Colorado voters and was intended purely to help treat mental health issues in the state of Colorado. The passage of that basically became the Natural Medicine Health Act of twenty twenty two. So moving into twenty twenty three, the Colorado Senate took up the approval of that and started writing the Colorado Natural Medicine Code. So that was adopted as Colorado Senate Bill twenty three dash two nine zero. Again, that's where they got into more specific information of how natural medicine would be regulated in the licensing process, the boards that would oversee natural medicine, things of that nature. And they've even taken a deeper step into the details this year with the state rulemaking where they've come up with even more detailed regulations. So that process concluded on July twenty fifth. And then they adopted the new rules of the Natural Medicine Code updated on October twenty first. So their intent basically is to begin accepting applications for licenses for natural medicine businesses on December thirty first. So there's a chance that they'll start issuing it on January first. It'll probably be later since they have to have people that will review the applications for compliance with the with the regulations. So just a broad overview of the state legislation. This is, you know, new territory for us and myself, so I don't claim to be an expert on every detail in the code. I've tried my best. But basically, it does allow persons that are over twenty one years of age to possess, share, cultivate, and manufacture. That's what the code says at the state level without payment. So again, there's no retail component. It makes it legal to have the substance there. You can grow it. I think the code says within a twelve by twelve area that's secured within your residence. But really, what most of the regulations are getting at is the commercial aspect of natural medicine businesses. So a lot of the regulations really focus on certification, permitting, and registration requirements. It also sets up an advisory board for five license types, which I'll talk about on the next slide. Just one rule that is very applicable to zoning is there is a thousand-foot distance requirement that's in the state code from these businesses. Basically, the property lines of the businesses to childcare centers, preschools, elementary, middle, and junior high schools, residential childcare facilities. So that's something that that's come up in the conversation about this today. We sent out a map that I'll show also that shows that Boulder happens to have a lot of childcare facilities. So that does take out a lot of the city, but we'll we'll talk about that as part of the presentation. The regulations go into a lot of detail about the cultivation, manufacturing, testing, storing, distribution, how it's transported, dispensation for for natural medicine, and and really gets at the like facilitation of what a certification looks like, what somebody has to do to get a license, what qualifications they have to have. And there's a whole bunch of regulations that they've created as part of the rulemaking process. When it talks about local governments, that's where we come in. So it says local governments may enact ordinances or regulations to govern the time, manner, and place of operations of licenses within Colorado. Local governments are not allowed to prohibit the use. We just have to reasonably regulate the use. We can't restrict the transportation of the product through the locality. And again, like we may not adopt ordinances that are unreasonable or conflict with the state law. So these are just some of the topics that are covered by the rulemaking. You can see it's very comprehensive. I'm not going to read all of these, but I know there's concerns about the handling of chemicals, how these are stored, security requirements, like if you have so much natural medicine on site, it requires cameras and surveillance, packaging and labeling. It gets into a lot of the details that, in addition to just the basic licensing and renewal process. So we've provided a link within the memo to the the rulemaking process that recently concluded. So we've basically been meeting with some industry experts on this. Again, I said this is new territory, trying to understand what this would look like. And I I think there's five license types. One is basically listed as other. There might be more specific things that roll down in the next few years. But what we're really looking at is natural medicine healing centers, natural medicine cultivation facilities, natural medicine product manufacturers, and natural medicine testing facilities. So when we met with experts, we learned that basically a healing center is like a typical therapy office. So it looked like a lot like this picture where there's going to be a facilitator. It doesn't have to be a licensed physician, but it does have to be a licensed facilitator per the state law. You know, so someone would would take the product and they would be monitored and there would be a whole process of where they're in a therapy type session. And I'll talk a little bit about the characteristics and impacts on a different slide. But you can picture a typical therapy office. It's a little bit different in the sense that when somebody takes natural medicine, they're under the influence of the product for much longer periods of time than a typical therapy office. It can be like six hours, potentially more. So facilitators are trained to monitor them for safety purposes, but also to make sure that they are safely making it through the the experience before they're allowed to safely be discharged. So there are rules about transportation to and from, like you're not allowed to drive within a certain period of time. These is this is all handled by the state law. The three other licenses really deal with light manufacturing. So these are going to be more like grow facilities or where they're testing the products or deriving the product from the mushrooms. This is more of an industrial setting. They don't. The other thing we heard from talking to experts is just the the sheer quantity of the product as well as the need for space, the volume of product is much natural medicine cultivation facilities, natural medicine product manufacturers, and natural medicine testing facilities. So, when we met with experts, we learned that basically a healing center is like a typical therapy office. So, it looked like, a lot like this picture, where there's going to be a facilitator. It doesn't have to be a licensed physician, but it does have to be a licensed facilitator per the state law. You know, so someone would would take the product, and they would be monitored, and there would be a whole process of where they're in a therapy-type session. And I'll talk a little bit about the characteristics and impacts on a different slide, but you can picture a typical therapy office. It's a little bit different in the sense that when somebody takes natural medicine, they're under the influence of the product for much longer periods of time than a typical therapy office. It can be like six hours, potentially more. So, facilitators are trained to monitor them for safety purposes, but also to make sure that they are safely making it through the the experience before they're allowed to safely be discharged. So, there are rules about transportation to and from, like you're not allowed to drive within a certain period of time. This is all handled by the state law. The three other licenses really deal with light manufacturing, so these are going to be more like grow facilities, or where they're testing the products, or deriving the product from the mushrooms. This is more of an industrial setting. They don't... The other thing we heard from talking to experts is just the the sheer quantity of the product, as well as the need for space, the volume of product, is much different than marijuana. Marijuana, or if you want to look at like alcohol, other things that are licensed locally and are required to be licensed locally by the state, take up, you know, you have retail outlets, you have much larger facilities to grow marijuana. In this case, with the mushrooms, much smaller spaces are needed. I don't have all the metrics, but like basically, they've talked about like for the entire state, it would be a much smaller area of of mushrooms that would need to grow, and much less product that's needed for the experience for the sessions. So, we've looked at these, tried to figure out what land uses this should best fall under. We've also looked at peer communities. But as far as characteristics, as I've discussed, supervised sessions can be with individuals or in groups, and can last six to eight hours. They say the effects last about four to six hours, but they give kind of like a buffer area. There's there's a whole tiered system of of sessions, like there's a session before you take the product, there's a session when you take the product, and there's like all these regulations that relate to that. Again, there can't be a retail component to this. As we've noticed, potential impacts, you know, largely analogous to medical clinics or therapy offices, but there is obviously that risk. This is a new type of use. We're kind of approaching this with a little bit of caution in the sense that if the rules that the state has come up that are not followed, there are some potential impacts in terms of people's behaviors when they leave the facility. So, these are things that we do have to monitor as we move into 2025. With the natural medicine cultivation, product manufacturing, and testing facilities, like we said, most of the impacts that we saw from that are very much analogous to other light manufacturing uses. You know, there's going to be, you know, delivery trucks, you know, a more of an industrial setting. There's going to be air handling equipment, things to handle chemicals. All these things have to have to be done to meet the state law. So, we're not seeing many impacts above what you would typically see in another light manufacturing use. Obviously, again, like the other use, any kind of noncompliance is where you might see some impact. So, again, it's a new type of use. We have to see how these new businesses kind of move into that, meeting the regulations. So, again, with the new territory, who can we look to? We've looked to Oregon. Oregon passed a similar state law about a year before the state of Colorado. It's very similar. Some of the terminology is a little different. Where it's different is that it prohibits any local government from doing local licensing. It also allows a local government to opt out, much like our marijuana regulations. We're not allowed to opt out here in Colorado. We're not allowed to prohibit them. We just have to reasonably regulate the time, manner, and place. So, we've reached out to a number of different different localities to see how they're dealing with it. We've also been talking with some state officials. You know, it's kind of like what you see in the rest of the country. I think a lot of counties tend to be more conservative and have taken a more conservative approach. So, Deschutes County, for instance, attempted to try to prohibit it, but that was over overruled. The vote did not pass. They tried to opt out. When we look at some of the peer cities like Bend, Eugene, Portland, and Salem, most of them have been moving in the direction of regulating psilocybin service centers, what they call them, as medical medical clinics or medical offices, or the the cultivation facilities as light manufacturing. That seems to be the most prevalent approach in local governments that we've looked at. Some of them prohibit the use of natural medicine, as far as natural medicine healing centers in residential zones. Some require a conditional use permit, which is the same as our use review. So, for instance, as far as my communications with Portland, Portland was one of those cities that did not allow them in residential areas. Other cities like Bend and Eugene allow a conditional use permit for it to locate in a residential neighborhood. It's been a little bit more challenging within Colorado to find out what the approach communities are taking. A lot of them have been in a wait-and-see approach. A lot of them have been waiting to see what we do before they do anything. So, we've checked in with them periodically. Parker was the first jurisdiction to adopt regulations. They did them in February. So, that was kind of our first, like, oh, we have a model to look at. So, they basically categorize it as a natural medicine business. They require that they not be, they're not allowed in residential zones, and they also have to be 1,000 feet from any residential use. They limited the hours, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and they've also set up screening requirements and their own local penalty process. So, Castle Rock has indicated that they are moving in the same direction as Parker. A lot of other cities, we haven't gotten definitive answers, but the ones I have highlighted are the ones that have told us that they are also moving in the direction of categorizing them as medical offices for the healing centers, and then light manufacturing or a light industrial use for the cultivation-type facilities. So, you can see, again, a lot of them are kind of moving in that direction, like the Oregon communities. So, we we had done this research, and then we came to City Council on August 1st, and we gave them this information and asked City Council what they thought of our approach and whether we were moving in the right direction. What we had originally recommended to City Council was that we, at the time, were not looking to do any local licensing. Again, because of the scope of this being very different from alcohol or marijuana, a lot smaller businesses, not not as prevalent. And then, as far as zoning, we were looking at categorizing them as medical offices and light manufacturing, but we were also looking at the possibility of not allowing them in residential zones or not allowing them within 1,000 feet of a residential use like Parker. So, when we talked to City Council about this, they disagreed. They felt like that was too prohibitive to not allow it in residential zones and to not do the distance requirement. That's above and beyond the state law. They did agree with the categorization of of medical office and light manufacturing, and they also agreed to not do local licensing. Or I'm talking about the majority of the City Council members. So, we've moved in that direction. They did ask that, you know, whatever we end up landing on is going to be informed by community feedback. So, we we did go out and do engagement. So, we've let people know about this through the PNDS newsletter. We've been meeting with industry experts, as I noted. We've attended roundtables and meetings hosted by Denver and the state to get a better understanding of this particular use. I think some of the largest concerns that we've been hearing across the board, some of it's, or a lot of it's, out of the control of the city, I think, is just the cost of sessions. You know, they're not insured because of the fact that they're not federally approved, so it's very costly. Making sure access to services is important in to mitigate some of that cost. Hours of operation has been a concern, just because like, you know, with Parker, you know, limiting it to office hours, that precludes a lot of the traditional practice of natural medicine that goes into the night sometimes. So, we've kind of been veering away from doing hours of operation. We've talked to Boulder County health officials. They do have some concerns about increased access of natural medicine to our youth in the community. We convened some of these people as part of a focus group, along with some cannabis licensing board members that were representing their own opinions, not the board opinion, but just because they have, you know, kind of similar expertise. We had some folks represented from NAROPA meeting to talk about this. When we talked in the focus group, they were largely supportive of the approach of taking a light regulatory approach at the onset of this, and then monitoring, and then looking if there's any tweaks we can make later. I think there were some in the group that felt that the zoning approach should be more permissive. So, again, they brought up the the issue of micro healing centers, which have different licensing and a different maximum amount of product that you can have in a smaller setting, and allowing it within residential zones. They did bring up a distance waiver from the state code, which is not something that we really looked into. They looked at, or they also talked about whether it should be allowed as a personal service use. Should we allow like retreat-type uses? Like, the retreat-type use is more like a larger gathering of people, that like, almost like a outdoors kind of experience-type thing. We don't have a lot of settings like that, that I think would would match up with more like what you have in the county. So, we've not moved in the direction of of allowing that at this time. It's certainly something we could look at. Another way we've gone to get some feedback is using the BeHerd Boulder platform. Again, this is a questionnaire. It's not a statistically valid survey. We've had this conversation many times, that it's not, you know, you know, necessarily representative of everyone in the community, but it does give us some good feedback. So, as far as that, we've we've included a summary of that feedback in attachment F. When we posed the question about whether there should be local licensing, it was actually split exactly evenly. It was like literally like 44.3 to 44.3 against and for. A majority of respondents, it was about 55 to 60%, were in agreement with the staff recommendation on categorizing them as medical offices in light manufacturing uses. 44% indicated opposition of allowing healing centers in residential zones. So, a slight majority were open to allowing them in residential zones, but that was even split. I I think 29% indicated that they should be permitted by right in residential zones, and 22% felt that it should be a use review, just like other medical offices. So, we've also been using the racial equity instrument as part of this process, specifically related to the indigenous people that have offered some concerns on this, being legalized at the state level. There's concerns that we've been hearing about the over-commercialization or advertising of this that's different than their traditional practice, concerns about restricting the late-night hours. We've been looking at, you know, do people of color, are they impacted more by mental health issues proportionally, and how can we mitigate some of that? I think what we've also heard is that there's permitting fees is a concern, particularly in like Oregon, where some communities have put some like expensive fees on applications for this, and that that's a barrier. So, we've been cognizant of that. And then, obviously, locational requirements are important to open up access. So, we also met with the community connectors and residents. They did express as their main concern that the legalization conflicts with their traditional use of psilocybin. And obviously, this is something that's more discussed at the state level. We're just trying to handle like the on-the-ground here in in the local government, and concerns about over-commercialization. They're concerned that because of the cost, that only the privileged will have access to natural medicine. But in general, the group was supportive of the city approach. They didn't have any objection to calling it a medical office or light manufacturing. They did feel like it should be allowed in residential zones, so it should be allowed widely to open up that access. So, I'm just going to jump right into ordinance 8665, which is refreshingly short compared to what many ordinances that you've all seen in recent months. What we've done at this point is we've added a definition for natural medicine business, which I have up on the slide. Again, it mostly just ties it to the state definition, and it includes healing centers as well as the light manufacturing uses. And I can come back to this. We've also updated our medical office slide to have three different categories of what an office, medical office means. The the language shown in the blue is the new language related to a natural medicine business. They're not allowed to have a retail element, so we we have to be clear about that. So, anything that conflicts with state law is not allowed. What we do, we aren't restricting hours, but obviously, the medical office definition doesn't allow overnight stays. So, what I think we're trying to say here is that you can have late hours if it's intended for someone finishing up their session. So, we're not allowing people to unsafely go out of of the facility afterwards, but it wouldn't allow overnight stays like we do allow with an addiction recovery facility. And then, we've updated our light manufacturing definition to recognize the cultivation, product manufacturer, and testing facilities. So, this doesn't require any changes to the land use code because these are existing uses. Again, this is what many peer communities have done. They've categorized them as existing uses. You can see in this use table how each zone would would recognize the use. It's generally an allowed use as a medical office in mixed-use business downtown zones. There are some particular regulations that apply to all medical offices that I included in the in the correspondence this afternoon. I'm happy to answer any questions on that. You can see that in some residential zones, it does require a use review. We don't typically see a lot of use reviews for medical offices in residential zones unless the context is includes other commercial uses. But I think based on the map that we've looked at, obviously, there there might be some pressures on residential zones, since so many childcare facilities exist in Boulder that rule out many of the business areas. So, that's something we can talk about. Light manufacturing, it's allowed mostly in the in industrial zones. You can see the BCS zone and MU4 zone allow light manufacturing as well. So, if we do want to come back to this, we can. This is just a comparison of land uses that we looked at as part of this. So, I know it came up in some of the questions. So, looking at comparing a medical office with personal service use or light manufacturing with a greenhouse, this is a comparison that we can come back to. You can see that, you know, we we looked at personal service uses. It it actually isn't regulated very differently than a medical office. There's a couple other zones where it's allowed in personal service use, and obviously, a personal service use doesn't have all the size restrictions that an office has. But a lot of those size restrictions are pretty large and wouldn't apply to a lot of these facilities anyway. So, we 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 just have this up for comparative purposes if we need to come back to it. And this is the definition of personal service use. I know this is something that came up in the focus group and something that came up in the in the questions from the board. So, based on the the questions that we got from the board today, we did look at and created this map and highlighted all the zones where it would be allowed based on the use standards of being categorized as a medical office or light manufacturing. You can see a lot of the BR1 zone, which is a commercial zone, and some of downtown areas west of Pearl, a number of those areas in RMX, it would be allowable. But you can see, it does end up ruling out a number of parts of the city based on the sheer number of childcare facilities. So, again, this is a state law. The state law does say that you can have a waiver done through resolution to supersede basically that distance requirement. We haven't done a lot of analysis as to what the implications of that are, so we're not recommending that at this time. If there's interest, we certainly could look into it. There could be some special regulations that could reduce the the distance requirement. But this is, again, is kind of new territory, and I think the the distance requirement, as far as I know, might have, the waiver of it might have been added later. I'm I'm not entirely sure about that, but it's something we'd have to do a little bit of work on. I'd be concerned about just lifting this without kind of looking at the use and how it functions as we move forward. That that's our our recommendation. But we can come back to this map as well. This is our suggested motion language. We're continuing to recommend that this ordinance move forward to council and be adopted before the end of the year. Our recommendation is to just get it on the books so that there at least is some clarity. Like, if we start getting interest in these facilities wanting to come in, we would at least have an answer of where they can locate. If there are other nuances, you know, related to maybe it needs to be categorized different, or maybe we need to look at micro healing centers and allow them differently, I think that's something that we could look at in the future, maybe see how some of these set up and how things are functioning before we make changes is what we would recommend. Boulder Police has indicated some concern with allowing these without a a local license, because the local license is is a way that enables them to do inspections of these facilities. So, they've also asked that we, you know, move forward with allowing it to function, but let's look at the use, see how it, if there's any impacts, and then maybe revisit it later with some potential regulations. So, we're seeing, we're hearing kind of, you know, perspectives on both sides as we move forward with this. Again, it's largely new territory. But if, moving forward, this is our suggested motion language, and that concludes my presentation.
Great. Carl, as usual, good work. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to clarifying questions, and I'm expecting a bunch. So, who's ready?
Thanks. Actually, it looked like Claudia had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Look left, look right, look both ways.
Okay. My first question is about the philosophy behind the restriction, the one thousand foot exclusion zone, whatever. Did you get any feel for what the actual concern was that was motivating that?
I don't know that we talked to the state officials about that specifically, but I assume it was, you know, a way to mitigate fears of allowing this, you know, potent, you know, medicine in close access to where there's children. And as I noted with Boulder Public Health, they indicated a concern that they have about children having more access to this. So I think it comes from that.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. Next question is, are there, so in a healing center, that's the right term, right? Are there any limits on like the number of patients that that can be in there at a time, the number of patients per therapist?
I think there's definitely a limit on how many participants per facilitator. I don't know if there's a maximum per facility.
Okay, but per facilitator there is.
Per facilitator, yeah.
Okay, great. And my last question for the moment is you were are proposing not allowing overnight stays at these facilities? Even though overnight stays are allowed in the recovery centers, right? What what's the motivation for that?
I think the motivation was to try to get it as closely as possible as a new type of use within the framework of a medical office to a typical medical office. You don't have a lot of medical offices that have overnight stays. And I think, again, as a new use, we're kind of walking into this with with some caution. We don't want to, you know, we don't want to get in the way of, you know, a late you know, session that might go, you know, into like the the evening. But having an ongoing use that could have some impacts through the night on adjacent properties is of concern. So again, I think we feel that allowing, you know, some businesses to set up and have a better understanding of what the impacts are are important before we have that level of leniency.
Great, thank you.
Claudia.
Thank you, and I want to appreciate everyone who submitted questions earlier today because that covered a lot of what I've been thinking about, but I still have a few outstanding questions. So most of the discussion in the memo has involved existing uses that we have in the code, so medical offices, personal services. As we look at appropriate zoning, are we in fact limited by the uses that are currently in the code or can we create new ones?
We can create new ones. It's just we're we're often creating new ones. So if there's ones that have analogous, you know, characteristics, it's it's our practice to try to see how it best fits.
Absolutely understand that impulse. Thank you. And then how do our nuisance ordinances in the city, such as those around noise, police calls, et cetera, apply to non-residential uses in residential zones? I think most of the discussion we've had there has been around like residential rental properties. But do the same kinds of standards apply to non-residential uses?
I believe so. Anything that, you know, creates an impact like noise or, you know, detritus on the property, it'd be the same. We would have our enforcement staff involved and.
Who's up next? Okay, ML.
Oh, we look at Mason. You never see anybody. Thank you, Carl. That was a beautiful presentation. It was so clear, just boom, boom, boom. I appreciate that. I've got three questions. You talked about the indigenous people and their input. I can't remember. That was a particular term. Did it affect the ordinance in any way? Is there anything in the ordinance that reflects the concerns or consider? I know you talked you know, that that's really more at a state level, but did anything happen at our local ordinance as a result of those conversations?
I think the biggest thing is just we originally looked at hours of operation and then moved away from hours of operation based on concerns we heard.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that. Secondly, does does law law enforcement have any extra concerns with potential illegal trafficking that would impact this these medical centers? And did that land in our ordinance in any way?
I can't speak on behalf of the police, but we did hear concerns, you know, similar to like marijuana facilities where it has a product that might, you know, prompt some people to go, hmm, maybe I'll try to break in there and see if I can get some of that product. You know, I think that's our concern. So they want to, obviously, their interest is making sure that these businesses are safe from break-ins. You know, it doesn't really play out in our proposal for the local regulations because the the state is pretty comprehensive on the requirements for security and things of that nature. It's just police's involvement is is going to be less more, you know, voluntary. They can't, they don't really have the authorization to like inspect facilities if there aren't specific rules on the books, like a licensing regime.
And does the state have precautions in place for the cultivation facilities regards to safety and potential invasion by traffickers type of things?
Yeah, I think the surveillance requirements apply to all the natural medicine businesses.
Whether they're the office or whether they're the facility. Okay, my last question is, are there any environmental contamination concerns that are unique to the manufacturing? And have they been captured in the definition? The definition talks about providing means to manage the environmental contamination, you know, in a broad sense. Is there anything that would be beneficial additionally due to this?
I think our thinking was, you know, I don't know the details, but I know that the state rulemaking did has a very robust section on handling of chemicals. And there's a whole process of deriving the product out of the mushrooms does require use of chemicals. I don't know that we came to the conclusion that those, because it's regulated by the state, we looked at it the same way as any other light manufacturing use where there's all any number of different light manufacturing uses that we have in the city that we don't get involved in the processes that they do. They're all usually federally or state regulated. And as long as they get their licensing, we just have the use that we we manage. We looked at it the same way.
So my my concern or the place that I would be that I'm looking at is is under the light manufacturing definition. And it talks about managing the environment environmental contamination from the manufacturing. And it it talks about managing it to to maintain the contamination to the lot that the facility is on rather than into the facility itself. So somebody in an adjacent, you know, building, we we see, we have industrial areas that aren't just one type of use that have, and especially as we're encouraging the development of the east Boulder industrial area and the north Boulder industrial area. They're not, everybody on the lot isn't one use. And so I'm wondering, does it? I didn't see anything in there that would say your stuff stays in your building. Was that anything you considered?
I think it's something we'd have to look into further. I think it's a good point. Again, we did look at the state rules and it seemed very comprehensive, but I I would imagine that the state rules are all about keeping it on the site as well, but we can certainly look into it.
Right. I'm just looking at our particular language. Our language talks about the lot, not about the facility itself.
Right.
Okay, thanks so much. Those are my questions.
I'm gonna check with Mason. Mason, oh, did I see your hand go up?
Yeah, definitely. Sorry. I I just realized this far into the meeting that my video is not working either, so I'm trying to fix that same time, but I do have a couple of questions.
Okay, please go ahead.
Sure. So I'm hoping you could explain a little bit further about Boulder's public health's concern to, as you mentioned, increased access to children from these clinics. How would that happen?
Well, I think just the in general, the natural medicine will become more widely available. And I think they have seen some potentially negative effects of, you know, marijuana to some degree. And I think similar vein, I think they have concern that there's going to be more access for those under twenty-one years of age.
Sure, but but. Through the clinics, additional access?
I don't know that I have like their concerns that that specific. I just, I did speak with an official who's brought that up a number of times. Again, it's it's looking, you know, their concern is more at with, you know, the state law more than, you know, how we handle it at the local level, but it's just a concern that they've, you know, logged with us.
Because there are laws against the distribution from the clinics, right? If there if there was increased access through the from the clinics, their licenses would be revoked and I would assume there would be additional criminal penalties.
Correct. You're not allowed to leave the facility with the product. Like I said, the state law is interesting. It allows you to have it in your residence and grow it. But you can't pay for it. You can't leave these facilities with it. There's no retail component.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And the the overall access, you know, because due to personal cultivation, I can understand that concern. I'm not really sure I fully understand the concern from clinics. I guess I was just hoping to get some clarification there, but moving on. Are there, there are also penalties if, and this is, I think this is medical center wide, if a medical center releases patients to themselves, like without, say, like a driver or somebody else when they're under the influence of any kind of drug, correct?
Well, I think the penalties apply to the facilitator for letting them go if they're not ready to leave.
Right. So if someone were say disruptive because they were still experiencing the effects of any kind of treatment, including this natural medicine, they would be liable?
That I don't know the answer to. I don't know the particulars of the the law to that extent.
Sure. And just just so I make sure that I'm understanding what I've read. State regulations are for that there are state regulations for signage or advertising that on misappropriation or exploitation of indigenous cultures, excessive commercialization and targeting of underage individuals. Did I read that correctly?
That's right.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Am I up?
Yep, you're up. Go ahead.
Thank you to my colleagues for all your excellent questions. We covered a lot of ground. Thank you, Carl, for an excellent presentation and memo as always. I do have a few remaining questions. Can we go back to that map of the places that are within one thousand feet of the childcare facilities and schools? So I'm looking specifically at the zones, not not all. If I'm understanding correctly, this map looks at all of the zones where any of the natural medicine businesses could be located.
I apologize. I don't know why it keeps it keeps closing it out.
We've all been there.
Been doing this for years and it's just like there's a new challenge every time.
I blame Microsoft.
Let me get to the right page first. I will try to close this out. Let me go move it over here. There.
Okay, so this is all of the zones where any of the natural medicine businesses could exist, right?
In the colors, yes.
In the colors. And the white bubbles are excluded because they are within a thousand feet of one of those childcare or school facilities.
Yeah, you can see the the icon that shows the kids on a seesaw is actually a childcare facility versus a school, which is the purple.
Oh, gosh, my eyes are not nearly that good, but, okay. Thank you for explaining that, though. That helped. I'll go back and look at that. So I'm looking specifically at the zones where light manufacturing is allowed. I'm having a hard time finding any of them on this map. So that's MU four, BC five and the I zones, the industrial zones.
Actually, this was more, this map was done, I think, for the healing centers. It doesn't include the industrial.
Okay, and so do we have a similar map for the industrial uses?
I don't have a map that shows the industrial, but it, you know, this this entire area you know, is all industrial.
Right, but it's but we've rezoned a lot of it so that it can have residential as well. So but it doesn't currently have any schools or childcare facilities is what you're saying.
Not that I'm aware of.
Doesn't the, I'm sorry, doesn't the one thousand foot restriction as worded by the state, that also applies to the manufacturing?
It does.
So so that map, that map is showing the exclusions for either a treatment center or manufacturing or testing or any of those. Any of the natural medicine facilities of any stripe are excluded in the in the white bubble area.
Exactly.
Okay.
It just doesn't show where those other zones are located.
Because you can see because they're all white.
Well, it sounds like there would be some zones that are MU four, BC five.
Yeah, much of this eastern area should show the industrial zones.
Industrial, but this map already does show the MU four and the BC five, right? Because those are also where medical offices are allowed. But I don't see any of those on here. Unless I'm just not seeing them.
MU four is like actually in this already excluded area here. That's that's the reason.
Right. So so we're basically saying you can't be in those zones because they're too close to childcare facilities and schools. I I'll save my comments for later, but I just wanted to clarify whether the light manufacturing uses are also covered on this map. And it sounds like the exclusion zones are, but we're not showing the zones where industrial manufacturing is allowed.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you. Second question, you talked about the micro healing centers and that some of the stakeholders you talked to who are very pro-natural medicine were interested in having micro healing centers in more of the residential zones. Is this idea of micro healing centers where it's fewer, I assume fewer numbers of facilitators, fewer numbers of patients, smaller amounts of the natural medicine, is that in the state code?
It is, yeah.
Okay, but but we're not accounting for that and we're not talking about having any of those in Boulder.
Well, it would just, it would still fall under a medical office unless we parse it out somehow.
So we'd be treating all sizes of healing centers the same?
Yes.
Okay. Good to know. Here's a question I have that I'm not sure are quite clear on the answer yet. So the state requires that facilitators be licensed. It requires that the other facilities as well be licensed, the healing centers, the cultivation facilities, manufacturing facilities and testing facilities have to be licensed. My question is, if someone is a state-licensed facilitator, are they required to work out of a state-licensed healing center? And are they required to use products that come from these state-licensed facilities? Or could potentially a state-licensed facilitator not work out of a healing center and grow some of their own medicine in their own residential setting, but also use it with clients?
I think it would all have to come from a state facility. I think the state law says you can have product for your own personal use. But if you're in a commercial setting, that it does, it would have to come from the state-licensed manufacturing facilities.
Okay. So that's that part of it. And do they have to be operating out of a state-licensed healing center? Because I thought I saw something in the state code where it talked about. Cause I thought I saw something in the state code where it talked about providing natural medicine services outside of a healing center.
Yeah, that I'm not entirely sure about.
I don't know if Christie is familiar with that. Thank you, Carl.
I am not directly familiar with that, but I can find the answer and get back to you.
That'd be great. Thank you. Okay, cause I, I think there are like provisions in the state code that talk about like, for example, um, recording and permissions around, uh, recording sessions and videotaping and that kind of thing. And doing it outside of a state licensed healing center, which implies that you can, a facilitator can work outside of a state licensed healing center. So if you can clarify that, that'd be great. Okay, um, and then my last question here is around co-location of facilities. State law also anticipates that you could co-locate a healing center with, for example, a growing facility. Would our code prohibit that?
Yeah, I, I think the way we have it set up right now, uh, we learned about the co-location part a little bit later, but I think our approach is still along the lines of having, you know, a healing center under medical office. And then having, you know, the, the industrial components in the industrial zones. That's one thing, as we've stated in the memo, um, is something we could look at in the future. We're not recommending to allow co-location. At this time, again, I think we would want to look into that further, um, to find out potential impacts, things of that nature before we allowed it.
Does the ordinance as written prohibit that co-location? Cause there are a few zones where both medical offices and manufacturing and growing are allowed.
If there's zones that allow both the uses, then it would just, you would just follow the same review process that's, that's in the code.
So you could potentially co-locate if both of those uses are allowed in the same zone?
In the same zone, yeah.
Okay. It would be useful to have a map of that as well, if, if you guys don't mind producing that, of what are the zones where a co-located facility could be. Thank you. Those were my questions.
Okay, I'm gonna call on myself. This, this whole topic, uh, once you start examining it, raises so many questions. And, and, and many of them are about the assumptions we make. Uh, just going forward, like, well, of course you wouldn't want to have it next to a school. Well, the, the question is, my question would be, do we have, how, how do we account for pharmacies in the code? Or surgical centers, or surgical centers, daytime only, no overnight stay, surgical centers. Are they accounted for as a medical office?
Yes.
Okay. How about a pharmacy?
Retail.
Retail. So, I mean, and I, and I, this is not a gotcha question, but we dispense all sorts of uh, life-threatening and addictive drugs from both those types of places. And Boulder Med Center right next to Casey, uh, middle school, et cetera. So is there a, I, I understand the kind of anecdotal concerns, but is there an actual data-based reality to restrictions based on distance for something that is a controlled substance? Um, like fentanyl, like opioids, et cetera. So it, it, or, or, anyway, is there, is there a database? Source that, that supports distance restrictions?
I don't know that there's a dis- there's a study that's specific to natural medicine, for instance, about distance. I mean, obviously we've used distance for a long time in the code for other things, you know, like, like when the BLA uh, issues a license for a liquor license, there's distance requirements that have to be met. So there might've been studies for alcohol that having a distance requirement impacts ac- access. I don't have any at my fingertips, you know, about this. Obviously the state, you know, felt it was important to put it in the state law, but then I think that eventually led to them, oh, maybe there should be an exemption for that, you know, put into the code, but, um, yeah.
Okay. And then the, the next question is, um, why do we have use reviews in so many locations for medical offices? I mean, it seems like the, like maybe like one of the most low-impact innocuous community, high community benefit that a- as I started really looking at the use tables, it's like, gee, so every time someone, you know, uh, a, a doctor coming out of med school doesn't want to locate with a giant practice, they actually want to go out on their own and, and start a little three-room practice and we're gonna make them go through a use review. And so does, to what end and, and why do we do that? Is, does, I, 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 I mean that genuinely. It's like, I, I'm, I'm having a hard time thinking of, of why that is. But I'd, I'd love to hear a justification for that if we're going to continue to have additional facilities that we're going to require use reviews for.
I, I think in this case, uh, we have to remember that, you know, most non-residential uses are prohibited in residential zones, but some are allowed. And any non, most non-residential uses just inherently require a user view. So there is, you know, obviously we have to look at it for predominantly, you know, parking impacts, things of that nature. If we're gonna, you know, get specific about, you know, medical office, I think we've traditionally looked at medical offices having a higher turnover, you know, with appointments, people are coming in and out all the time. There's a lot of activity in the parking lot versus a traditional office where people come and work their nine-to-five job. You know, things like that. So, but either way, I think the point here is that's not the primary reason why it requires use review. It's just, it's use review because it's residential zones. And, you know, there are, you know, impacts like parking or, um, uh, store, uh, garbage disposal, things like that, noise, uh, activity that have to be evaluated with every use review.
And so, um, and, and I, I probably should have reread your answers. But when I look at the A with brackets under medical office, across from medical office, under a number of business zones. So it's allowed, but with restrictions. Are those restrictions, do they end up being like a mini use review? Or is it just, you, you guys just make a determination of whether or not it meets that criteria or not?
Yeah, it's usually, it can be just a building permit, as long as those quick parameters can be checked in the building permit. Um, it's not like a use review. It's not discretionary.
Okay. All right. I think that's it for now.
Can I, can I call? Can we, um, uh, one of your questions?
Yeah, we, go ahead.
So, um, for the medical practice, you mentioned the, one of the reasons for use review um, was the intensive, uh, potential impact on traffic, et cetera. Am I right to understand that the sessions at these facilities last six to eight hours?
That's correct. I thought that would be a follow-up question, but I, again, I, I, I did want to make the point that like it, it is a use review because it's a non-residential use. It's not primarily because of parking. I'm just saying, being a planner for a long time, we've always looked at medical offices as having that higher impact. So I understand your point that if there's longer sessions, there's probably not going to be a lot of turnover. But that's something that we would look at in a use review. Like you learn about the operate, operating characteristics that are unique to that use in the use review to determine if there are any impacts to the, you know, adjacent residential uses. Thank you. Does that help?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, Laura, go ahead. You, you go and then we'll, we'll make sure you get back to them.
Okay. Getting back to everybody's favorite bubble diagram. What happens if a daycare or a school opens? Are they allowed to open within a thousand feet of one of these licensed businesses? Let's say the licensed business is there first and then a daycare moves in next door.
Great question. I think that's something the state would have to answer. I'm, I'm not sure. It seems like unfair to say to a natural medicine business, you can't operate anymore because a daycare has come in, or to that daycare that you can't locate there. Um, I don't, I don't know exactly the answer to that, but it's a great question.
Okay. And then al- also, if I'm looking at this map correctly, it looks like about ten daycares could almost completely blot out the ability of these, um, businesses to locate in the city of Boulder. Is that, is that your read too? About ten daycares open in those little colored blobs?
Oh, if, if like each located.
Yeah, if each, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, potentially.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Kurt, go ahead.
I had sort of a follow-up to what Mark was asking. So currently, medical offices are a, allowed with use review in the m- m- medium and higher density residential zones. They're not allowed in low-density residential zones. If anything, to me, that seems kind of backwards because low-density zones, there's just more space and there's sort of more room for any impacts to be, to be spread out and mitigated. So it's another philosophical question. Philosophically, why do we do that? Independent of natural medicine at all. Why, why, why is, are we taking that approach with medical offices?
I, I think it's a history of expectation, you know, like in the United States, obviously, we didn't allow a lot of mixing of uses, particularly in lower density zones. So introducing them over time can be challenging because it's very different than what people expect. You know, when they move into those neighborhoods or buy a house or rent an apartment, whatever, like. I, I think that's, you know, one reason, I, I understand your point that there's more space, but, uh, it's, it is a big jump to, you know, start allowing those uses more routinely in those areas. That's obviously something that's of interest in the BVCP update, you know, maybe looking at more opportunities for mixed use. But I think again, historically, you don't typically see a pharmacy or something popping up in the middle of a single-family neighborhood. Um, and I think those are the things that we have to look at and build policies from to, to potentially change if that's the community's desire.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Any additional questions? Okay, um, we will commence with the, uh, public hearing. And, um, we can see if we have anyone online.
Vivian went ahead and signed off for the night since she's on vacation right now and was helping us out remotely to start. But we can go ahead and start the online public participation since I don't believe there's anybody here in the room to speak.
Well, let's, let's ask, are, are you here to speak on this subject? Okay, thank you. All right.
And so if there's anybody online, if you would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, we have one raised hand. Um, first up, we have Lynn Segal. Lynn, um, just give me one second and I will get the timer started for you and go ahead and talk. Uh, you should be unmuted now.
I think if Don Trump had some psilocybin, we wouldn't have all of these problems. Because he's so screwed up from his childhood that he's kind of messing with the whole world, but I never found the need to commercialize this kind of activity. Growing up, I mean, we grew psilocybin mushrooms around Bellingham, you know, like it was done on our own. I don't, I'm not comfortable with commercializing yet another kind of standard item that should be available to people. I'm a little bit debated about it, um, because on the one hand, I feel like it should be available to people, but on the other hand, I don't think that our culture is yet ready to be indulging ourselves in these kind of things. I think they're a lot better than, than common, you know, drinking and alcoholism. So I don't really know how I want to input what I want you to do in this situation. It's kind of debatable. But I don't think it's an issue about being by daycare centers. I suppose that mothers might want to indulge in psilocybin mushrooms, trying to deal with their kids. But I don't think little kids are gonna be doing psilocybin mushrooms. It's just like, and why do we, why does anyone need to do any of this stuff? It's because we have like developed ourselves to such a de-evolution of society that we need something artificial. I don't think it's therapeutic, so to speak. I think that we have enough, we have our brains and we can therapize ourselves rather than needing these external substances, even if they're quote-unquote natural to take care of our, you know, societal ills or psychological needs. Um, I think it can be done by ourselves. So I guess I would kind of say that I don't think this should be there, but it, it debates me because I don't think there should be drinking the way it's done, so normalized. It's really, really destructive. So I don't know how you're gonna take that, but that's the best I can do. Um, is there a timer anywhere?
Yes, Lynn, your time just expired. We had the three-minute timer up.
Okay, I'd like to be able to see it because it helps me construct my commentary.
Thank you. We, we had it up on one of the cameras during your presentation and it just.
I'm, I'm not seeing it at my end. So you know.
Actually, I'm not seeing it either, but thank you, Lynn, for your comments.
Thank you. We have no other hands raised, so we can, unless anybody, oh, actually, we do have one more hand that just went up. From Martha Hartney. Martha, um, uh, let me go ahead and unmute you and then you will have three minutes to speak.
Um, Thomas, it.
Yeah.
You can go ahead. I don't, is, is it easy to go ahead and put her, um, timer up? I, I believe.
I'm not sure why they aren't seeing the timer.
I can, I can see.
Carl, could you stop sharing your slides?
Okay.
I can see it. It's boarding commissions too. You may have to look for it and then, and it, you can see it. It might be on like a different screen or something.
Okay, please proceed.
Hello, Martha. Um, you'll have three minutes and you should be unmuted now.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Martha Hartney. I am an attorney in Boulder, Colorado. I've been practicing here for fifteen years. I am also very well aware of the Natural Medicine Health Act and I am a member of the Psychedelic Bar Association Board of Directors. We even have our own, um, specialty bar. I have about two hundred lawyers who know quite a bit about plant medicines and the Natural Medicine Health Act. Um, I just wanted to say I'm very pleased to hear the direction of this board's deliberations and their questions. Um, I have a lot of experience and if any of the members of the board want to, um, ask me questions about these things, uh, um, separately, I'm certainly able to do that, or Carl, if you needed anybody to just talk to you about plant medicines, I can also chime in. Um, I do think that the direction you're going in and treating the healing centers as, uh, medical offices is a wise one. Um, I would be also cautious to not over, over-regulate, especially at, um, overnights. Um, that wasn't, that was a topic that came up tonight that I hadn't really considered before. But with my experience with plant medicine suggests that a great deal of healing is done in the wee morning hours because that's when our traumas come up. Some of the most traditional healing modalities do happen at night. So I hope, uh, you will get some, some room and effort towards that. You identified a few issues where the personal use model that is also incorporated in the Natural Medicine Health Act bumps up, um, with the regulated access model. Um, and I'm, I'm pleased to see that you're gonna take that into consideration and keep the doors open for how this unfolds. Um, I do hope that more and more people will look to some of these natural medicines that have been out around for thousands of years. that have been around for thousands of years and the technologies and the traditional knowledge that goes with them with more respect and care and avail themselves as something that the earth provides as a unique way to understand what's going on inside of us and with each other. So thank you all, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Martha. If there's anybody else that would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand, otherwise we'll move on with the meeting. No more raised hands, so I think we're good to go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. Our, even though we took a quick dinner break, does anyone need to, we'll, we'll have a break between this and the next agenda item. Okay, is that good? Okay. So now we're going to move to board deliberations. Yes?
Can I just ask if there's a follow up to the question that Christine was going to research before we move to deliberation?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
So the question that you had asked me regarding facilitators working outside of a state licensed facility, it does look like the intent is to allow for, or is to require that these facilitators work within a state licensed healing center. There are also rules, though, that allow for like Zoom doctors, so them to provide these services over video. I would say, in, in my legal opinion, the rules are clear as mud in this. They have some requirements where, for example, product can only be given to a healing center and that healing centers have to have facilitators. And then they also have sections where it's not entirely as clear. So I think the intent of the rule from the state was that these facilitators are required to be providing these services within the healing centers. It also requires that their licenses have to be placed in these healing centers.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to move on to board deliberations. And I've been thinking about how to structure this because this was not one where I thought about drafting motions and I talked to Laura and anyway, it doesn't feel like we're, it feels like we need to have some deliberation before we make motions or amendments to motions. So I'm, I'm ready to open it up. But I would also recommend that we focus our discussions around modifications that we think we'd like to see. Rather than just natural medicines in general, lots of different things, but really focus around things that we potentially want to change. I also, and Christine, this might be a question for you. When we are doing a quasi judicial hearing, we get into a situation where we have a main motion and it's important to have amendments to that main motion that we then vote on the amendment and then back to the main motion, et cetera. There's nothing, when I read the code and I read Roberts, there's nothing, especially in when we are acting in an advisory capacity like we are now. This is not quasi judicial, we're just, where we could approve a main motion that says, yeah, we like staff's ideas about this. And then have a separate motion with a separate vote that says, we also recommend that council adopt a 250 foot limit rather than a thousand foot limit. And that would be separate from the main motion, it's just its own motion. Would you have any concern with that?
So my only concern is when that conflicts with what's in what you've already approved. So for example, what you're saying here is what's in the code right now, well, I guess it doesn't have the 1,000 feet, but if it did, for example, if we had in our code that there was an 1,000 foot setback and you all approved that and then said 250, I think that would be an issue. But if it's an addition or a recommendation, I think that would be okay in this situation just as you're recommending body. I'd also defer to staff if that would be too confusing for them to communicate to council if you all did it that way. So I don't know if they have any comments on, on that.
I think if, if the motion is clear, we, we can convey it. I think it might be like, the question might come up with, does the motion support the ordinance as proposed or not? So that would be something to consider. It could be, you support the ordinance as proposed, but I, there are these additional things that should be considered. That's different than, we don't support it as it's proposed and here, here's what changes we'd like to see. So just the clarity in that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Laura?
I'll just say procedurally, I have a couple of things in mind that might modify the ordinance that I think would, I would like to see packaged with the ordinance. And then maybe one or two things about that, those kind of follow on stages and things to consider in, in a separate stage, for me, would be a separate motion.
Great, I, I think that's, I think you've laid out exactly what I was trying to do, but you said it more succinctly. Thank you. So let's begin with deliberation and comments and again, try to focus on things that we might want to change, but are in our thoughts. So who's ready to go? Laura?
So I will jump in and say that I like the simplicity of the ordinance and the reliance on the state regulation that we're supporting. In general, I'm also very sympathetic to the comments that were received from the people who have experience with either these kinds of medicines or similar medicines that the more restrictions we put on, the more it drives up costs and decreases accessibility. And our whole purpose here is to put, balance the need for accessibility and reasonable cost with any kind of impacts to the community. And I'm saying, what I'm seeing in my own reaction to this and my analysis of the data and what's been presented and the public testimony is I'm not sure that I'm convinced that there will be huge impacts from these centers, although I understand the precautionary approach. So I'm inclined to be less restrictive at the outset and then put more restrictions in later if we're seeing impacts rather than the inverse. Now, my colleagues may differ on that, but that's where I'm leaning. And so I think that in the interest of trying to actually make this accessible and, and allow businesses to be successful here in Boulder and drive down the cost, that I would like to consider removing the 1,000 foot rule because I'm not sure how that would be implemented if, for example, more childcare facilities move into Boulder. And also, I'm not really truly convinced that, that there would be a lot of harm or any more harm than just, you know, people who go to a liquor store or people who go to a dispensary, right? We're not seeing a lot of harms from people who even are able to purchase these substances retail and leave the premises. So let alone people who are under the guidance of a licensed facilitator. So I'm inclined to think about removing that 1,000 foot rule, especially in light of the maps that show that a lot of the city would be excluded if we keep that in place. I'm also inclined to look at this idea of overnight stays. Again, I think that making people leave at like 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning when their session is done, but they may be sleepy or, you know, otherwise not really feeling like driving because they just had a really powerful experience, that that could be more disruptive to a neighborhood and potentially more injurious to public safety than letting people stay overnight. I'm not sure why having people stay overnight would be disruptive in any way. So I would like to look at potentially considering exception or a change to the rulemaking for that. So those are the two modifications I might suggest and why.
Claudia?
So I'm going to echo a lot of what Laura said about balancing accessibility with impacts. And I also am not seeing a high risk of impact at this point in time. One of the things that I was thinking about listening to the presentation and also working through our zoning code are some of these inconsistencies on how we treat medical offices in different types of residential zones. And I understand that's a bit of a relic of our code, when and why it was written. But I'm a little troubled by how we would be treating neighborhoods inconsistently in how we allow these facilities to be cited. Specifically, they're allowed in some low density zones and not others. They're allowed in some high density zones, not others, et cetera. And that does not seem to have any real rationale based on what we're regulating here. So I would be looking for some guidance to city council on consistency in how we're treating our residential zones, whether we take a more conservative or a more liberal approach to where we allow things to be cited. But to really think about what are the impacts in residential zones? And are we in fact treating our neighborhoods equitably in how we approach the citing? And I've written up some language around that, that I will circulate later if we get to that point of amendments.
Kurt?
Yeah, I'll just briefly say that I agree with what Laura said and I agree with what Claudia said. I think we should absolutely be treating our residential zones with consistently, but also with logic. And I feel like the, the restrictions as they currently exist are not necessarily logical. And, and Claudia also mentioned equity and obviously that is also incredibly important part of it. And I feel like the current restrictions are also not equitable. So I would support all of what my colleagues have said so far.
Mason, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Nothing real new to add, Kurt, Claudia, Laura, you, I, I agree with everything you all said. The only thing to really add is that I think it's important to realize that there have been gold star peer reviewed studies on the effectiveness of this type of clinical intervention for anxiety, depression, PTSD, published in peer reviewed journals, so much so that there's meta-analysis available to support these findings, which is, like I said, the gold star standard in medical research. So I think, you know, treating these, these clinics as anything other than medical practices would be completely inappropriate.
Great, thank you, Mason. ML?
So my modification is, is more mundane. It has to do with the, with the building and the consideration in the light manufacturing zone of the environmental contamination not leaving the facility as opposed to not leaving the lot, which I think is, is a significant difference in impact to the existing businesses in any given area and potentially, well, they'd be in the industrial zones. So that is the sort of modification that I'd be interested in, including which would just be language inserted into the definition that talks about that if the lot is shared that the environmental contamination is confined to the enclosed premise rather than contained to the lot. And Carl, when I mentioned this before, is this something that, that would more, rather than a modification, that it would more be recommended for you to look into? How do we, I mean, it, it's not, it's not a difficult thing to add that language into the definition? How would you proceed or think about it?
Yeah, we, we can look into making that change in the definition.
So would not necessarily need to be a modification?
ML, could I ask you to clarify? So I'm familiar with lots of industrial manufacturing procedures and so forth. You have a contaminant, paint, varnish, whatever, all sorts of things that are under hoods in a building. And they go up and they go out to an external outside filtration trap, all sorts of things. But, or outside the building, but effectively eliminating the contaminant from the environment. It, it actually gets very difficult at times to have those mediation devices, mitigation devices in the space in which, because you're either doing negative pressure or positive pressure. And so, so if, if you're saying that you want all mitigation for a chemical contaminant inside the building, I, I, I think that might be working counter to what your goal is.
I'm looking at the existing definition where it, where it talks about light manufacturing means facilities, blah, blah, blah. Provided that such facilities are completely enclosed and provided that any noise, smoke, vapor, dust, odor, glare, vibration, fumes and other environmental contamination produced by such facility is confined to the lot upon which such facilities are located. And I'm, I'm wondering, can, is there a way to, because again, we don't know what's going to be next door and next door and next door. And we already see it with the marijuana facilities where there's one grower in an area and they contaminate everybody, but it's on the same lot. And so people, people's businesses suffer and there, there are consequences to those environmental contaminants being freely exposed to the entire lot, which the particular cultivating facility is only but a part of. So, so that, that is, that's the particular part in the definition that I'm just looking to. Is there, is there a way to, to create some guardrails around exposing other people in that same building to these contaminants that could be detrimental to their businesses?
Laura, go ahead.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If, if I'm reading this right, ML, and I am sensitive to your concern here, you're talking about the definition of light manufacturing, which applies citywide, not just to these businesses, but every light manufacturing facility. So I would think that that would be a recommendation that'd be separate from this ordinance to say, hey, city, can you investigate whether there is a problem, as ML is describing, where confining it to the lot exposes neighboring or adjacent uses on the same lot?
Right.
And see if there's something about the definition of light manufacturing that needs to be fixed for the whole city, for every light manufacturing business.
Yeah, I was looking at it in, in light of the changes that are proposed in this ordinance.
Right.
So, yeah.
And, and my concern here is that that piece, which would change light manufacturing around the city, was not noticed properly for the change that you're looking to make here. So we can take that under advisement and work on looking at that in future code changes.
Yeah, because I think if this is a new, a new use and we don't really know the environmental, potential environmental consequences and potentially they're not huge facilities, they will go into buildings that have, that have other occupants. And so I think that that consideration might be more so than, say, a marijuana facility or others that are bigger. I think it's, it was pointed out, they're bigger facilities, but if these are going to be small facilities, is, is there a unique thing that, that could be looked at in regard to these environmental contaminants and managing them when they could be in a context of, of more tenants? So I'm seeing Carl nod and it sounds like it's something that, that you will consider as a recommendation and not needing to be.
Code change, just looking at, you know, broader than just natural medicine, looking at how that might impact other light manufacturing uses and whether that makes sense. We'd have to, you know, look at those other uses.
Not knowing what's going to happen with these small mushroom facilities. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call on myself and, and my comments are, I, I super appreciate the fact that we have an ordinance in front of us that's two pages long or not even fully two pages long. Right, you know, it's like, not only is it elegant, it probably represents a lot of work and thought that, that isn't, isn't contained within those two pages. So, and I, I, I'm hoping and what I hear is that I think we can be similarly concise and elegant in making two changes to that. And it was what I heard and I'm just going to see if people agree with this, that the 1,000 foot rule should either be modified or eliminated. And that, that would be part of the, that would be an amendment to that main motion or a change to that main motion. And the, the overnight stay component, I think to me, it sounds like is another one that would be important. Should we agree to it, to modify in that? should we agree to it, to modify in that main motion, that our, that planning board's recommendations are, those are the two key areas that I heard. Then going on from that, in other motions, planning board would advise that council direct staff to investigate growing onsite. You know, that the two, that I can have a treatment center and grow onsite, that would be something not for this ordinance adopted on an emergency basis to allow, but something to investigate in the future. And the other one would be the ordinance regarding use reviews of medical offices and whether or not we should be changing that to allowed uses without use review. But that would be separate from that, those main motions that, for further study and investigation. Does that make sense? Okay. Kurt, go ahead.
I'm not sure if what you were describing, Mark, encompasses what Kurt and I were referring to about equal treatment of residential zones.
Right. That would be also something outside of the main motion. Is that right? Or would you think that that would be part of?
I am agnostic on how we embed that in our recommendation, but I would like to consider some recommendations around that.
Okay.
I would benefit from seeing the specific proposal. I know you said you had language. I'd love to see it.
I will send it to Thomas and maybe we can get it up on the screen.
Thank you.
So, okay, any more deliberation before we start, any more discussion before we move to motion and amending motions, et cetera? Laura?
So outside the context of changes to the ordinance, I would also love to make a separate recommendation about a Phase Two that would consider being a lot more, well, I don't know what the right word is, but expanding the ordinance to also provide for micro-healing centers and additional zones that might not be appropriate for a full-blown medical office, but maybe for like a solo practitioner, small practice. And also consider the retreats idea, which I think that is a current practice that a lot of people find a lot of value in is the psychosilicon therapy in a group setting. So allowing for that within the city limits. And then also this idea of co-location. I think all three of those things, micro-healing centers, retreats, and co-location is something that I would like to see this board recommend for a future stage, that that be given some serious consideration, that maybe we're not ready for now. But if all goes well, would love to see us move in that direction to make Boulder more of a welcoming place for these businesses.
Thank you. I think that's very helpful. Then, with everyone's agreement, I would suggest that we concentrate first on modifications to the motion. Make the motion, make amendments, get that done, and then go on to make additional advisory comments under, Laura, under the structure you kind of just suggested. Is that good with people? Okay. Then, again, structurally, if we, I would suggest that we go ahead and make the main motion as staff has suggested it, get that seconded, and then seek carefully worded amendments to that. Or if someone has a main motion with some carefully worded suggestions in it, we can begin that way.
I think I would suggest going with the main motion suggested by staff and then offering any modifications as separate amendments, each one.
Yep, great.
So I'd like to go ahead and make the motion unless somebody else wants to make it. I move that planning board recommends that city council adopt ordinance 8665, amending Title IX Land Use Code, BRC 1981, to implement Senate Bill 23290 and locally permit natural medicine businesses defined in the state bill as natural medicine healing centers, cultivation, production, and testing facilities, and setting forth related details.
Second. Okay.
Carl, did I understand you to say that we are not going to be doing locally permits? We are not going to be issuing local permits?
No, no local licensing.
So is that different? Local permit, that just means building permits?
Yeah, just building permits. Yeah.
Is it the word permit that is confusing? Should we say allow instead of permit, which I think I heard Christine just suggest? Okay, we mean allow, not like a noun permit, but verb. We are permitting natural medicines. Okay, we're not talking about a permitting process.
Imply creating a new permitting process. That's what you're getting at?
Good clarification, good clarification, ML.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And now would be the time to start formulating. If anyone has an amendment to this ready to go. Otherwise, I can start. Go ahead.
I can do one that's really easy, which is, this is an amendment. I move to amend the ordinance to allow overnight stays in natural medicine healing centers equivalent to those allowed in addiction recovery facilities.
Second.
Do I need to write that up and send that, or Thomas, you got it?
I was working on pulling up the ones that Claudia had sent over. So if you could send over the...
Okay, let me write it up and send it. So I'm going to withdraw my motion. I'm going to write it up and send it to Thomas.
Okay.
Just so we make sure we have the right exact language.
Okay, all right.
If you wanted to seek a second on it now, I can also just capture that for the minutes later on.
I seconded it and, oh, you captured it.
I don't have Laura's currently written down, but I can get it the way she worded it for the minutes later on, if we prefer to do it that way.
We'll just let her write it up, but I think it'll be close enough that... I can always withdraw my second if you, but I think it's...
I have it. I'll send it. We can put it on screen.
And these should probably be framed as we're modifying the motion to recommend that city council do X.
Right. That main motion language, it just disappeared. So does the main motion language...
It's a recommendation.
So planning board recommends, yeah, okay. Yeah, we've got that as the first words there. And so Laura has sent her motion. And when Thomas can put that up. Anyway, we can start while we're waiting to look at it. Conceptually, we can discuss, we can, Laura, it's your motion, so you may speak to it first, and then we'll go down the line.
I would just reiterate the comments I made earlier, that I think that requiring people to leave the facility could cause more disruption and public safety issues if people are leaving in the middle of the night because their session didn't wind up till like 11:00 or 1:00 in the morning, rather than letting people stay overnight. And I do not see any kind of disruption or public safety hazard from letting people stay overnight. So I'm moving to strike that requirement, that overnight stays are not permitted.
Any other comments? I have one, and that is, also, I think that, and maybe I misunderstand this, but I would imagine that in some settings, some facilities, rather than use an extract of psilocybin, may decide to use mushrooms, you know, dried mushrooms themselves. And the dosing of such things can be variable. Consequently, the timing can be variable. And again, just adding to your point, it's just we are dealing with a natural medicine, not a synthetic medicine business. And so I fully support this. And again, just simply on public safety and minimization of impacts. Okay, so, okay, here is our motion to amend, which... Christine, is this okay as it is? Or do we need to word it so that it actually fits within?
Suggestion. If I would just have you all say specifically referencing that section. So amending the definition of office medical, I think it's the last sentence of the definition of office medical, to state, with the exception of addiction recovery service facilities and natural medicine businesses, which may permit short-term overnight stays, blah, blah, blah. So actually saying where it goes into that section. And I can send that to you, Thomas, real quick in the chat. So what you all would say would be motion to recommend modifying the ordinance for the definition of office medical to state, and then it would say, with the exception of addiction recovery facilities and natural medicine businesses, which may permit short-term overnight stays, no overnight accommodations are provided in medical offices. Does that work?
I think that works, except I do think we intend to limit it to natural medicine healing centers and not all natural medicine businesses.
Perfect.
Thank you for that precision, Christine. We appreciate that.
Give me two seconds to write that.
So she, I think she's putting it in this sentence. Yeah.
Trauma medicine healing centers, right?
Yeah.
I just put the motion language that Christie sent up on the board here.
Yeah. Looks good.
Okay.
I was typing too fast.
Okay, let's all take a look at this for a second and then...
I tried to bold natural medicine, but it didn't, I couldn't do it in team, so.
Okay, I think this holds true to the motion. And as a second, I agree with this. Is there any other deliberation? Or we'll vote on this amendment to the motion? Okay, so we have a motion to amend. The motion to amend reads, motion to recommend modifying the definition of office medical to state, quote, "with the exception of addiction recovery facilities and natural medicine healing centers, which may permit short-term overnight stays, no overnight accommodations are provided in medical offices." Okay. Let's vote. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Mason?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, that passes unanimously. So sticking with this particular mode of correctly modifying the ordinance simply and elegantly, then, before we go on to motion-making, I would, in the spirit of things, move to eliminate the distance requirement entirely. That if we, it gives credence to distance if we say, well, 250 feet or whatever. I would think it would be best to just eliminate that, to accept ourselves from that, from the state law. Okay, I've got a lot of nodding heads there. Okay, so...
May I comment?
Yes, yes.
I did want to comment that the state law specifically permits local jurisdictions to vary the distance restrictions or eliminate facilities from those restrictions. So the state law specifically anticipates that we could say, we don't want that distance restriction for some or all of these facilities, or modify it. So we are permitted to do that by state law. I just want to make that super clear. And I also, you know, it was gently pointed out earlier, and then I'm not going to name names, that the state law is a little contradictory in that it allows any person, anybody, not licensed by anybody, to grow, possess, and use these natural medicine substances specifically in residential zones. You have to be on private property, which is specifically defined as being non-commercial. So to me, it does not make sense to say you can use these things as a private individual in your own home and share them with people in your own home, but for some reason, we feel like we need to have a distance restriction on businesses that are located near children, right? It just doesn't, in the absence of any specific safety concerns around children, which I don't think that we have, other than, well, people might violate the terms of their license and let people under the influence leave the facility. But then, what does 1,000 feet matter if somebody is under the influence of a psychedelic substance? It's not going to wear off within 1,000 feet from the facility. So again, I think that this makes a whole lot of sense to not have these distance restrictions, especially given how much of the city is covered by this.
Kurt?
Yeah, I completely agree with that. And I also feel that this is, that the natural medicine healing centers, as I understand them, are a very different ball of wax from a marijuana dispensary where people are purchasing marijuana and walking out with it and can hand it off to anybody, you know? Or they can buy it for, not necessarily legally, but they can buy it for someone else. Here, everything's staying within the healing center. And so I just don't understand any rational concern about children getting their hands on it anymore than they would, as Laura said, by use within the home. So I agree with eliminating the distance restriction.
Claudia?
I also agree with eliminating the restriction. I wrote up language anticipating maybe not quite so much support for such a strong recommendation specifically focused on the childcare centers. That is something where we should definitely be talking about waiving that restriction. And my rationale for that was just thinking about the extensive protections that already exist in childcare facilities in terms of who can access those and supervision of children in those areas. So I don't see really any reason that we would expect adverse impact in those settings. I'm happy to go as far as talking about eliminating it with schools, too. But I did write up language to reflect that with childcare centers.
I have the motion language written up by Claudia. This was also one that was written up by staff, if you all would like to consider this one. If you all would like to consider this one.
Um. Okay.
Can I just add on to that real fast?
Yeah, please, Mason, go ahead.
Yes, so just one step further. I mean, these are medical centers, medical treatment centers. We don't require this of any other medical treatment center that also uses Schedule One, Schedule Two, and Schedule Three drugs with their patients. So I see no reason to single these medical treatment centers out. There are regulations that if they were to violate standard use in practice, they would be at risk legally and, you know, of legal repercussions and of losing their licensures. So I see no reason to single them out for any reason.
Great, thank you. Christine, so it, we, we don't actually have a motion just yet because I'd like it to begin with the way we would do it correctly in modifying the ordinance and the way, have you written something up?
Yeah, so this is what Carl has written and looks good to me. So what it says in the law is that it's not an ordinance, so it's actually separate from ordinance. It's that the city council can pass a resolution waiving from this 1,000-foot distance. So it's a little bit separate of a document and kind of strange, but yeah, that's how it's supposed to be done, is through resolution.
Okay.
So would this be separate from our main motion and amendments to the ordinance? Sounds like this would be separate from the main motions and amendments to the ordinance. Because this isn't a change to the ordinance, it's a separate.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
So maybe we table this and come back to it once we're done with the ordinance changes?
Yeah.
Okay. It's interesting, though. I would think that this, this would be one. I'm looking at the ordinance, which defines a natural medicine business and then goes on to say, or natural medicine testing facility pursuant to Colorado National, Colorado Natural Medicine Code, Article 50, Title 44, and associated state rules. Could we just, rather than put, have a period there, say, with the exception that Boulder will not have, Boulder will not have a distance restriction. Will not have a distance restriction to childcare and schools, childcare centers and schools.
So I think you can make that change. My only concern about that is it's a lot easier to change a resolution than it is to change an ordinance that you pass, right? So, and then there's also your, the city council, in order to waive that, is going to have to do a resolution anyway to, to meet with state law, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay, so we'll table this. Kurt?
Well, just following up on that, I, I feel like part of our goal in, should be to have the Boulder revised code be readable and understandable by people so that they can read the code and understand what the rules actually are. And if we don't include that in the code, then how does anybody have any way of knowing that this 1,000-foot restriction doesn't apply? So I, I, I do feel like it should be both in the code and separately a resolution, even though that seems redundant.
I think my answer to that is that if we were to add something about the 1,000-foot being waived, it would not necessarily be a simple, straightforward change in the ordinance. We would have to figure out where that would have to go in the code. Like, it would end up making it a conditional use standard or a specific use standard, and we'd have to add it. So it wouldn't be as easy as you think. I, I, I think that's why we think the resolution, which is something that the, the state law speaks to, would just make it clear that the city of Boulder declares that this doesn't apply. And then it's just the responsibility of the owners to know their compliance with state law. And they worry about that state law piece. And then we just look at, is it a medical office or not? Is it permitted in this zone? That's all we'd have to worry about from a local standpoint.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. I just can imagine someone wanting to figure out, oh, okay, I've got this spot here. Can I have a natural medicine healing center here? And they go read the code and, and they read state law, and they're, the answer seems to be no, because they're within 1,000 feet of a childcare facility, for example. And then they also have to go through and read every resolution by, ever made by city council.
No, I think in our application materials, that would be clear. I think, you know, we have FAQs for most of our application types, especially when we do something new in the code, we'll have FAQ. So I think it'll be apparent in a number of sources. There will be a link to the resolution, you know, in Title Nine, so you'd be able to cross-reference it on MuniCode, so it wouldn't be as esoteric as you would think. You wouldn't have to go combing through, you know, resolutions.
Okay, we can link to the resolution. Then, then that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, then, then I'm going to go ahead and I move to recommend that city council consider passing a resolution to waive.
I don't think you can do that yet because we still have the ordinance motion on the table.
Okay, right, right. Because we're not doing, right, thank you. Okay. Good to have you sitting right here next to me. Okay. Are there any other proposed amendments to the main motion to the ordinance? Claudia?
So I have written up two versions of our ideas about equitable treatment of residential zones, if these would be appropriate at this time. So I, I think those are the two.
Are you, are you, should we concentrate on one or the other? Are you advocating for one or the other here?
I am, I believe advocating for the second one. I wrote the first one in case there was an interest in providing additional protections for some neighborhoods. Depends a bit on the mood of the board. But I think the second one is the more, the more liberal one.
Based on my reading, I would support the second one.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
So you are suggesting that natural medicine healing centers could be located in any residential zone, RL1, RL2, mobile home parks?
The way that, that I have written this is to encourage city council to adopt an ordinance that treats residential zones equally. It is not taking a position on whether they should be allowed in all or none, but simply if we are taking an approach of allowing them in residential zones, we should do so consistently.
So, so to me, that means, because the ordinance as proposed does allow them in high-density residential zones and mixed-use zones, this would mean we are saying, allow them in all residential zones?
Yes, I would be challenging city council to make that move.
But the ordinance also prohibits them in low-density zones. So you could make the same argument that consistency would, I, I don't think, I don't think that this specifically says which way to go.
So you're saying either allow them in all or prohibit them in all? I'm not sure I'm in favor of either one of those.
And why?
Mason, go ahead.
Why, why just natural medicine and not, not all, I don't know, there's like three different definitions, I'm forgetting what the overall different term was, why not all clinics?
Or, so how do we treat medical offices? Do we, medical offices are treated variably under the code currently. And so, so as written, the ordinance treats natural medicine centers as a medical office, and medical offices are allowed in some zones and not in others.
Right, correct.
I, I would, I would be deeply concerned that this might ultimately eliminate natural healing centers from all residential zones. And yeah, I, I don't think I will support this.
Claudia, can I ask you to clarify? When you say you want residential, you want the treatment of the natural medicine healing centers to be treated consistently in residential zones, consistently to what?
So when we talk about impacts of this kind of use, medical office use, as it were, I would like some, if, if we consider that there are impacts that are not appropriate for some residential neighborhoods, which it sounds like the current formulation of the policy is suggesting, okay, that these may not have, these may have impacts that are not appropriate for low-density residential neighborhoods, why are we then allowing them in higher-density multifamily neighborhoods and not vice versa? Likewise, if we say that we expect minimal impacts on surrounding residential uses, why are we restricting the kinds of neighborhoods that these centers can locate in? That's the, it's the, that's the issue that I'm trying to get to with this.
So it's a bigger question.
It is a bigger question.
Philosophical question about equity. Yeah, got it.
And I think this also speaks to our consistency or lack of consistency or over use of use reviews in all sorts of situations. I think our use tables are crazy in many instances. I'm, I, I struggle with trying to deal with that in this particular context at this moment.
I will say that I am much less attached to this approach, given that we have some consensus on eliminating the waivers around the childcare and educational facilities. I think that gives a lot more opportunities for access in places that we were potentially blocking out.
Well, as I sort of suggested in my question earlier, I actually feel that they would be more appropriate, if anything, if you were going to make any distinction at all based on the intensity or density of residential areas, I feel like they are more appropriate in low-density residential areas than in high-density residential areas because the impacts are just more spread out. So I guess what I would ask the board is, would there be support for a modification of this that would say amend the ordinance to allow natural medicine healing centers in all residential zones?
So I'll just speak for myself and say, I really, really, really understand where this is coming from when we think about it in terms of impacts. I don't have any concerns about these being impactful in low-density residential zones any more than any other medical office use. The place where I get hung up on is the, what Carl brought up, which is we don't currently allow any commercial use in a lot of our residential zones. No medical offices, no retail, no office space that's more than just like a personal, you know, maybe you see a client or two as a tax accountant out of your home or something like that, home businesses, home-operated businesses. I forget what the term is. And so I am very reluctant to single out natural medicine businesses as the one business that would be allowed in RL1, RL2, and mobile home parks, because I think that would make them a target and, and in a very inappropriate way. So I think this is something that we may want to address on a broader scale in the BBCP update in terms of mixed use in residential zones. And that is, I think, something that requires a lot more public notice, a lot more conversation. And hopefully, that can be part of our BBCP conversation. I'm very reluctant to do it very piecemeal here tonight.
I'm going to concur with Laura, just what she said.
Same.
So we've kind of done this straw vote. And Mel, I, anyway, it might just save some time. Are you, what would your thoughts on?
Yeah, I, I think there's too much ambiguity and sorry. I understand what you're trying to do. And I think recognizing that this particular service in the city and the population it serves might be better served in places where we don't have the capacity to at this point. But I, I don't, I don't feel like there's enough specificity to, to what is being proposed that would actually make it happen the way we anticipate, so.
I appreciate the discussion, and I anticipate we will have it about other uses in the future. Thank you.
Do you want to make the motion and?
I'll withdraw.
Okay, all right. Any other amendments, proposed amendments to the main motion? Okay, any additional discussion to the main motion as amended?
So we just have the one amendment, right? The amendment about the overnight stays?
Mm-hmm. So do we have the text of the motion with the amendment included? And I'll read that and then we'll vote.
This is just the, the amendment that Laura made.
Okay. Well. Okay.
Mark, are you thinking you need to reread the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we need to see the text of the original motion and then the text of the amendment, please.
Just one second, I'll pull that up. So this was the original motion?
Okay. So I believe, so if you would scroll up just a little bit so that we can read, no, I'm sorry, down, I guess. Okay. Wouldn't we just have a motion that includes the language with the exception of addiction recovery facilities, et cetera, as part of that main motion now that we've adopted the amended motion? Or do we just say, we adopt the main motion and we, when we made this amendment?
I think the amendment.
Can I make a suggestion? So the original motion, the suggested motion, main motion, it starts, planning board recommends that, blah, blah, blah. And then, so that can be one statement.
Yep.
And then as part of the same motion, we can also say, planning board also recommends modifying the definition of office medical, blah, blah, blah.
Yes, okay. The second paragraph, beginning with the same words, planning board recommends. Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to package it up as one thing, right? We, we have passed in the, in the past, here's the main motion. We've already passed the amendment to say, if the main motion passes, it passes as amended. So we would, you would just read, here's the main motion as amended, and here's the amendment. This is the package that we're voting on, the motion as amended.
Yeah, that's how we did it in 900 Walnut with the amendments.
Okay, so Thomas, if you could scroll back to the top, there we go. Okay, the motion that we're about to vote on is, planning board recommends the city council adopt ordinance 8665, amending Title Nine Land Use Code, comma, BRC 1981, to implement Senate Bill 23-290 and locally permit natural medicine businesses defined in the state bill as natural medicine healing centers, cultivation, production, and testing facilities, and setting forth related details. Scroll, planning board also recom- Planning board also recommends modifying the definition of office, comma, medical, to state, with the exception of addiction recovery facilities and natural medicine and natural medicine healing centers, which may permit short-term overnight stays, comma, no overnight accommodations are provided in medical offices."
And then this was, this language here is from the amendment.
Yes.
So that won't be a part of this motion.
Yeah, correct. Okay, so the motion, the motion as amended is on the table. We'll vote now. Claudia?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, are there additional recommendations to City Council regarding this agenda item that were not included in that main motion we just passed?
Well, there's the one that we wrote up and then tabled. Do we want to pull that one back up regarding the 1,000-foot distance?
Thomas, are you or Christine working on that either one?
I'm working on pulling that one back up.
Okay, thanks.
And by the way, did somebody second that, that full motion that you just made?
I don't think it's, I'll just make it again.
Okay.
I seconded it.
Oh, you said, okay, it was.
If I didn't, I meant to.
Okay. Okay.
Here's that motion regarding the proximity to schools.
Okay. So then, are, do, is there any more deliberation on this? And I'll, I'll read it again, but if there's more deliberation, let's hear it.
I would suggest striking, consider passing a blah, blah, blah. Yeah, I would, I would recommend, I would, I would suggest replacing, consider passing a resolution with just pass a resolution.
Yes. I agree with that. Okay, any discussion? Okay, so the motion is?
I think somebody has to make it and somebody has to second it.
Okay, whoa, whoa, I thought we just did that. Okay, okay, but just to be safe, we're going to do this. So I move that Planning Board recommend to City Council, no, Planning Board, that I move Planning Board recommends that City Council pass a resolution to waive the 1,000-foot distance restriction of natural medicine businesses to schools and daycares as permitted by state law on natural medicine.
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion? Okay, then we're going to vote, and ML, we're going to start with you this time.
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Any other advisory motions to City Council related to natural medicine centers?
Did you have one on use reviews?
Were you speaking to me or Claudia? Okay, not at this time.
How do we ensure the other good ideas, you know? I've heard, I'm specifically thinking Laura and brought up about this are revisited.
Wait, I'm, I'm sorry, Mason, could you state that again? I think you're cut out of the beginning.
Sorry, how do we ensure that the ideas that Laura brought up to be revisited at a later date are as special appropriately?
I can make a motion about that.
Yeah.
If that would help. I, I would like to, I mean, Mason, I think I hear your concern is making sure that they're revisited in a timely manner. Is that what I'm? So I guess I would ask staff, what would you consider to be an appropriate timeframe to, to evaluate how things are going with natural medicine businesses and then potentially consider a Phase Two?
Six months? One year? A year or 18 months, I would say.
Okay, okay, can we say like no later than 18 months after implementation? That we recommend that this be revisited? Or do you want to say a year?
Do you have specific things that you want to be revisited?
Yes, so, and I can, I can write this up and send it to Thomas, but I would say Planning Board recommends to City Council to evaluate the success of the ordinance in achieving the city's goals regarding natural medicine businesses and reevaluate specifically potential for micro-healing centers, retreats, and co-location of facilities within six, 12 to 18 months. Something like that.
You write that up.
I'll write that up.
Okay.
Is this a recommended, recommendation to council or staff? Because staff's welcome to take any of that feedback and come back to you all in 18 months? Or we can add this as a recommendation to City Council for them to look at it in 18 months? What are you all looking, or thinking this will look like?
I mean, if it's a Phase Two, wouldn't it come back to both Planning Board and City Council? So I think we are recommending that, that this be revisited as a Phase Two with Planning Board and City Council.
Yeah, go ahead.
So what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Carl and Charles, is that you are, you've been singing along, you're planning to, this is going out there as a, okay, we understand that we don't know everything about this and we are going to keep our eyes on it and we are going to tweak it as necessary, et cetera. Is that, am I understanding that you've got this on your radar?
Yeah, the same way that, you know, anytime we change the code, we're kind of monitor, we're always monitoring and prepared to adjust if we need to. And we routinely bring sets of code change cleanups forward when we identify things that aren't working. So that's typically the construct is that we'll monitor and adjust.
Is it useful to you to have this come forward as a motion, a requirement? Or is it something that you will put on your schedule and work on it diligently as staff?
It's something that we'll monitor and adjust regardless. And, you know, again, I think if we're seeing issues procedurally, that we'll make the amendment, we'll bring forward the amendments that will help smooth those out regardless. But, you know, if the one-year or 18-month, you know, timeframe is helpful, you know, to the board to remind us to kind of do a bit of a postmortem on where we're at, you know, that's fine, too. We'll continue to keep an eye on it.
Thank you.
Well, I'm hoping Laura makes the motion. I would second it. And not to diminish staff in any way or their input. I, I think it is more, has a greater impact that councils see it. I like it in our meeting minutes. I like it as a direct communication to council because we really, we can't do anything with staff's work plan and neither really can council, but the city manager can. And anyway, I think it's a proper way of communicating our, our thoughts and concerns. And I would support continuing it that way.
I have just submitted some proposed language through the chat.
Do you? I think we're ready to, if you want to make that motion.
Sure, I'll, I'll go ahead and Thomas, maybe you can put it up when you get it. But the language that I have written up is, "Planning Board recommends that staff evaluate the success of the ordinance in meeting the city's goals regarding natural healing businesses and consider a Phase Two update to the ordinance in no more than 12 to 18 months. We recommend that Phase Two specifically consider expanding access to natural medicine through micro-healing centers, retreats, and co-location of facilities."
I second that. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Laura, do you want to speak to this as the motion maker?
Though I think we've basically talked about it. It's just, it's just a recommendation to evaluate and consider expanding. And these are three of the things that I think we heard from the indigenous community, the practitioners of natural medicine, and potentially the users of natural medicine. But these are things that are, are useful. These might, like small practitioners being able to practice in potentially a slightly less clinical setting, being able to have group sessions, group therapy sessions, potentially in an outdoor setting like a retreat. And then this idea of co-location of facilities. These small practitioners might want to be able to have a very small growing operation to be able to locate that onsite along with their business so that they don't have to pay the premium of locating a facility offsite or paying for access to such a facility or the products of such a facility. So I can just imagine that there are, and I have heard that there are practitioners that operate on a very small scale and this, this would expand access by making that a bit more user-friendly here in the city of Boulder.
Any other comments or debate?
I don't have debate, I'm just going to, I won't be supporting this and I won't be supporting it because I, I don't think, I don't feel like it's our, our responsibility as Planning Board to direct staff on timing of things. We've heard them say that they've got this on their radar and we've heard that the process is unfolding because this is a, kind of a new thing that we're, that we're dealing with. So I, I trust that the planning department and staff have this and I don't feel like a motion is, is necessary. So I won't be supporting it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment? Okay, I'm going to call a vote on this. I'll go to Claudia.
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
ML?
No.
Mason?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, now we're cooking. Any, any additional motion-making recommendations to be made tonight on this item? Kurt?
Well, I'll just throw out that, following up on what Claudia and I were discussing about the consistency and equity of the, the use allowances across residential zone districts, would people, I just, I guess I want to straw poll, would people be interested in a recommendation that is part of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan update that be examined to be improved?
As it relates to natural medicine, to this agenda topic? Or just in general?
I mean, I would like to see it in general, but I would frame it in this context, specific to natural medicine healing centers.
As, as much as I think about our use, the use tables, all the problems with the use tables, excessive use reviews, et cetera, I, I don't want to muddy the waters on, in this agenda topic. And as Christine said, is this, would it be properly noticed? Okay, so I think, yeah, anyway, I, I think both procedurally and message-wise, it, this isn't the place for it.
Okay, to clarify, I guess I wasn't certain quite what you said because to clarify, I was talking about restricting it to natural medicine healing centers.
So, so what is your, I just want to clarify then, what would your motion be?
I will, I will make my motion.
Okay, let's let, we'll let Brad talk. Brad, you want to address this and, and then while you type away?
I, I thought I knew where the discussion was going, but I think it'll be helpful to understand the motion.
None of us knows where the discussion is going. I move that Planning Board recommend that the Boulder Valley Comp Plan update process consider ways to improve the consistency and equity of natural medicine healing center use allowance across residential zone districts.
I'll wait to see if maybe there's a second where I can comment. I, I'll just add that, you know, certainly we'll defer to the board's preference on this, but there will be various opportunities to offer up work plan items and, and also comprehensive plan subject items for this board. One of the things that we obviously haven't had in a while is a retreat to talk about kind of work, work plan items, but that's an area where we would talk about that. And then the comprehensive plan updated again will afford many opportunities for input on subject matter items. I'm not quite sure how we would track a motion like that, this. It kind of hangs out in the ether. But of course, we're, we're happy to defer.
And just sort of to respond to that, I totally understand. And I, I realize it has zero weight of law. It's more sort of in the nature of a note to self and also kind of note to City Council that, hey, this would be a good thing to take up. But I totally understand that it's, from a technical standpoint, it's completely extraneous and so if it doesn't pass, that's fine.
Does it have a second? Thank you.
We've got a motion, oh, Mason?
Yeah, I heard someone, and I, I'm sorry that I'm forgetting who, who said this, but I'm hesitant to support this mainly because it singles out natural medicine. I would be more supportive if it was clinics in general.
Right, but the, the, both the agenda topic, et cetera, is, is, is very specific to an ordinance and?
Yeah, and the ordinance has the definition. It, it already alters the definition of clinics or whatever it's called. I'm forgetting the name again. So I wouldn't, would it be unheard of to, to recommend the review of those facilities in general in the use, use tables?
Well, I, I, I think we can make that recommendation. I think though that making it in the context of Agenda Item 5A, which is review of a particular ordinance.
I see.
Maybe both awkward and not particularly, not what, not noticed enough legally to have, anyway, it, I, if we don't have a second, we can just end the discussion. So do we have a second? Okay, hearing no second, we're done with that. Any other amendments? Okay, then I'm going to close Agenda Item 5A. Recommend that we take a five-minute break and, and then come back at 9:15. It's 9:17. We're going to call the City of Boulder Planning Board meeting back to order. Our next item of business is Agenda Item 5B, Concept Plan Review and Comment Request for Proposal to Redevelop the 55,246 square foot site at 777 Broadway with a five-story, 55-foot-tall, 82,500-square-foot, 63-unit, multifamily residential building with ground floor, podium parking, and amenity space. The unit type mix would include studio, two, three, and five-bedroom units. The proposal includes a request for a 57% parking reduction, reviewed under case number LUR 2024-00037. So Chandler's going to kick us off with a staff presentation clarifying.
Yes.
I just want to state before we get into this that I was on Landmarks Board when the demolition permit for 777 Broadway came for the Landmarks Board. So, I mean, I wasn't on, I was the liaison from Planning Board to Landmarks Board, so I saw it in that context. So I just want to make that disclosure.
Interesting, because I thought that was the meeting I attended for you.
I think there were two meetings.
Oh. Okay, because I, I know I attended a Landmarks Board meeting recently where they put a stay of demolition on this site.
Yes, okay, and, and just on last Wednesday, they approved the demolition permit.
They did approve it?
Yes.
Oh, interesting. That was speedy. Okay, I won't get into that, because that's actually an interesting...
Part of my presentation.
Outcome. Okay, all right.
Don't steal my thunder, guys.
Okay.
So, so Mark and Kurt, do you have to make any kind of statement about your ability to be objective?
I don't, I, I can't think of why.
Yeah, you all are appointed liaisons to the Landmarks Board, so I think in your capacity on that, on the planning board, it's fine.
Okay. Okay, so anyway, Chandler's going to present, we'll ask clarifying questions, the applicant will present, clarifying questions, and then we'll provide feedback and input. Okay, thank you. Take it away, Chandler.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Plan Board members. I will be presenting on the Concept Plan Review at 777 Broadway. Oops. Just quickly, I'm going to go over the concept plan purpose, public notification, planning context, project background, summary of the proposed project, and then key issues for discussion. So the purpose of concept plan, as you all likely know, is to really just review and provide feedback on a conceptual plan. This can include arrangement of uses, circulation, transportation issues, methods of encouraging alternative transportation, architectural characteristics, environmental preservation, et cetera. It's intended to give the applicant comments from the public, city staff, and Planning Board early in the process before they submit a formal development review application. There is no formal action required by the Planning Board on this application. So in terms of public notification, written notice was sent to property owners within 600 feet. Notice was also posted on the property. Staff has received calls from five neighboring community members expressing concern with the proposed project. No written comments were received, so those were not included in the packet. Specifically, residents expressed concerns regarding the proposed density and the parking reduction, as well as potential traffic and circulation impacts. Another item related to public notification that we need to discuss tonight, which, which we gave Mark a heads-up on in the agenda meeting, there was a, a noticing issue with this in terms of a published notice on our end, on the city's end. So the November 12th meeting was noticed in news from City Hall on Sunday, November 3rd, but the public hearing agenda title for this item was not, did not make it into the classified ads until Wednesday, November 6th. So that, technically, the code requires 10 days' notice of publication. This was published six days in advance. The board will have to make a finding whether or not the defect in notice impaired the surrounding property's ability to participate in the review process. If the board finds that the surrounding property owner's ability has not been so impaired, the board may hold the hearing. But if the board finds that the ability to participate in the review process has been impaired, the board would then have to continue the item for at least 10 days. So we can pause right now if you guys want to make a finding whether or not you think this affected the public's ability to participate.
Having never made a finding before versus a motion, et cetera, is this just a little debate and a vote as to whether or not, okay, does anyone have any comment on whether or not we should continue with the concept review tonight, given the defect in noticing that staff has mostly repaired? Mel?
I have a question. Finding that the surrounding property owner's ability has, has or has not been impaired, how would we possibly have that? What, what is the, how would one know that the property owner's ability has been impaired or not?
So, oh, surrounding property owners, excuse me. Well, we did send out mail notice to everybody who owns property within 600 feet. The property was posted, so I think it was staff's feeling that it wouldn't impair surrounding property owner's ability to participate in the review process.
So out of three mechanisms, two were...
Correct.
Two were to follow the protocol.
Right. And the third was followed also, but just four days late.
Right. Thank you.
Kurt?
May I just add, may I just add too, that by being asked to make a finding, we're asking you to just make a judgment that given what we've told you and the additional follow-up, that it's adequate?
I have a question. This is framed specifically in terms of the surrounding property owner's ability to participate, not the ability of the general public to participate. Is that because of something in the code?
This is just, this is the code language, copied and pasted.
Right. Laura?
News from City Hall on Sunday, is that something in a paper?
The Daily Camera.
That's in the Daily Camera, okay. And is that the online Daily Camera or the print version?
I think it's both.
I think it's both.
It's both, okay. All right, so it was a few days late getting into the paper, but you did the mail notice to the property owners, and what was the other mechanism?
The posting.
Oh, posting on the property, it's like a sign on the property, so people passing by.
And it has a QR code on it.
Thank you.
I'm ready to take a vote on the finding, and so I would propose that we find that the process has not been impaired, and we can carry on with the concept review. So...
I would second that.
Okay, let's vote on that. Mason?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay.
Okay.
So, carry on. Thank you.
Moving on. So the project site, 777 Broadway, is a 55,246 square foot property on the south side of Broadway, just north of the new Vista High School property and directly across Broadway from the University of Colorado campus. The property is located within the Central Boulder University Hill sub-community, and is surrounded by a mix of multifamily development directly to the west along 20th Street, ranging from two to seven stories. Multi-use path runs along the east side of the site along Broadway, and the area is well-served with high-frequency bus service. The site currently contains two, a two-story L-shaped apartment building with a hip roof and moderate eaves, originally constructed in 1957. The existing building was eligible for landmark designation. You guys know how that played out, and I will get into that further in a few slides. The Boulder Valley Comp Plan land use designation is high-density residential, which is defined as areas that are generally located close to the University of Colorado, in areas planned for transit-oriented redevelopment and near major corridors and services. Uses consist of attached residential units and apartments, may include some complementary uses, and the BBCP anticipated density is more than 14 units per acre. The zoning on the site is RH5, which is defined as high-density residential areas primarily used for a variety of types of attached residential units, including, without limitation, apartment buildings and where complementary uses may be allowed. Attached dwelling units are allowed by right in the RH5 zone, and intensity standards for the RH5 zone allow for a maximum floor area ratio of 1.5 and require a minimum of 15% of the lot area to be provided as open space for residential units. The applicant pointed out that my memo may have included incorrect information about 60 square feet of private open space being required in RH5. If that was in there, it was not supposed to be. That has been removed from the code, so there is no minimum open space per dwelling unit requirement. So this is a picture of the existing site taken from Broadway. Now, the two-story Lux apartment building lies adjacent to the project site to the north, and then the seven-story San Marco North condominium building lies further north, which you can see there behind the Lux building. The property is currently owned by Horizons International and contains the two-story brick apartment building with surface parking. You can also see that there are views to the Flatirons from Broadway. This is just moving up Broadway a little bit, showing those same three buildings that I just talked about. The building at 777 Broadway is not designated as an individual landmark, nor is it located in historic district. However, because the building is 50 years old, historic preservation is required if demolition is proposed. The applicant submitted an application to demolish the building in July of this year. In its initial review, staff referred the application to the full Landmarks Board, finding probable cause to believe the building may be eligible for landmark designation. Then on September 4th, the Landmarks Board held a public hearing to consider the demolition application, and they voted to place a stay of demolition on the application, finding that the building may be eligible for designation and contribute to the character of the neighborhood. Then on November 6th, the Landmarks Board voted to approve the demolition of 777 Broadway. The site is clear for site review. The approval is valid for 180 days, so the applicant will likely need to reapply by the time they're ready to apply for demolition permit, but that would be a staff-level review. This is just another shot of the nearby buildings to the north. This photo is looking south on 20th Street from near the intersection of 20th and Broadway. You can see the apartment buildings on both sides. And then this is a view of the existing access to the site. So this, what looks like an alleyway here is, in fact, kind of a flagpole-shaped portion of the property, which extends the 20th Street. And as you can see, it also provides access to the neighboring properties to the north and south, though not through any formal easement. So in terms of the proposed project, as you mentioned, and as is in the agenda title, the proposed project is to redevelop the site at 777 Broadway with a five-story, 55-foot-tall, 82,500-square-foot, 63-unit multifamily residential building with... 82,500-square-foot, 63-unit multifamily residential building with ground-floor podium parking and amenity space. The applicant is proposing a mix of four-studio, 23-2-bedroom, 4-3-bedroom, and 32-5-bedroom units at this time. Given the proposed unit mix, a total of 143 parking spaces would be required under the code. As noted in the application materials, the applicant is proposing to provide a 61, uh, to provide 61 parking spaces, which equates to a 57% parking reduction. So in terms of the site layout, the, the proposed project would still take access from 20th Street, as shown here. The existing Broadway access to the site would be removed. They're proposing new landscaping and continuation of the existing multi-use path connection along Broadway. Two at-grade patio slash amenity areas are shown, one of which is covered, two elevated courtyards on the second story, and a rooftop deck. In terms of the massing and architecture, the proposed project is showing five-story massing on all sides. The materials are a mix of fibers cement panel, brick, and vertical seam metal panel. The proposed ground-floor podium parking garage would be visible from Broadway along the south side of the east face of the building, with a covered open space area and amenity leasing space fronting Broadway on the north side. This is just another shot of the proposed project looking from the new Vista High School property. You can see the L-shaped building, which is largely a result of the irregular lot shape. So for key issues, we have four plus a bonus key issue. First one is, is the proposed concept plan generally compatible with the goals, objectives, and recommendations of the BBCP? Second key issue is, does planning board have feedback for the applicant on the conceptual site plan and building design? Number three is, does the board have feedback on the proposed 57% parking reduction? And number four is, does the board have feedback on the proposed building height of 55 feet, taking into consideration the additional criteria for buildings requiring height modification found in Section 9214-H4 of the Boulder Revise Code? And key issue number five is, any other key issues that the board may wish to discuss? So just a brief kind of analysis on each key issue. So in terms of key issue number one, staff finds that overall, the proposal is in keeping with the intent of the high-density residential land use designation, and that it is a high-density attached residential project on a major transit corridor directly across from the University of Colorado. As mentioned in the staff memo and the criteria analysis, there will be other BBCP policies that will be used to evaluate the project during site review. Some of the main ones are 2.33 Sensitive Infill and Redevelopment, and then 2.41 Enhanced Design for All Projects, and several of the kind of sub-policies within 2.41. In terms of key issue number two, I just have some considerations here that I'm happy to bring back up during the discussion. Key issue number three, in terms of considerations, so as I mentioned before, there are 61 off-street parking spaces proposed where 163, is that number right? Sorry, 143. That's a typo. 61 off-street spaces proposed where 143 are required based on the current bedroom count. Section 996, which is the, where the parking credit, reduction criteria live, requires the applicant to demonstrate that the probable number of all motor vehicles to be owned by occupants of and visitors to dwelling units in the project will be adequately accommodated. There are other criteria as well, but that's kind of the main intent. So considerations to take, considerations to take into consideration during this discussion will be proximity to transit, multimodal connections, proximity to available on-street parking, and transportation demand management measures. In the applicant's written statement, which is included as attachment B, they do state that a robust TDM plan, along with extremely convenient location, will incentivize residents to take alternative modes of transportation. The TDM plan may include orientation packets, information about nearby transit services, ecopasses for residents, alternative transportation funds, additional onsite short-term and long-term bicycle parking, and ride-sharing incentive programs. So we did not get a final TDM plan as part of concept review, but they did indicate some of the things that they're planning to include. Key issue number four, this one has two slides. I'm just going to go over the main criteria that are included in this part of the site review criteria. So the findings that need to be made for projects requesting a height modification are that the form and massing are compatible with the character of the area, or improve upon that character consistent with the intent of the building design criteria, that the building's form, massing, and length are designed to a human scale and to create visual permeability into and through the site, that the building height is compatible with the height of buildings in the surrounding area, or that the building is located near a multimodal corridor with transit service, or near an area of redevelopment where a higher intensity of use and similar building height is anticipated. They must also find that the project preserves and takes advantage of prominent mountain views from public spaces and from common areas within the project, and that an inviting grade-level outdoor garden or landscape courtyard is provided, designed as a gathering space for building users. Then as I mentioned before, we have kind of an open key issue slot. And then next steps, following the concept review hearing, city council may vote to call the item up for a council hearing to provide additional feedback. The applicant will then either proceed with submitting development review applications, or may submit a second concept review application if they so choose, and a site review application will require a public hearing and final decision by planning board subject to city council. And now I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions.
Great, thank you Chandler. Okay, now's the time for clarifying questions about the site for Chandler. ML?
Hi Chandler, thank you for your presentation. So there's a reference to a Central Boulder-Uni-Hill sub-community plan?
Just a sub-community, they don't have a plan yet.
Oh.
Yeah, it's just, it's just the neighborhood, basically, yeah, but there is no sub-community plan.
Okay, so it's part of something, but it doesn't exist yet. Good, I couldn't find it.
Me neither.
Thank you for that answer.
I think we'll be self-organizing while, Mark is gone. Two quick questions. There was reference in regards to the parking requirement, there was a reference to the deadlines or a phase-out time of July 2025, which I think is related to the statewide legislation.
Yep.
So what, what has to, what would have to happen before July 2025 in order for them to still, for the parking requirement to still apply, or what would, I guess, sorry, I'm not framing this very well. They've, they've submitted for a concept review, so are they under the parking requirements then as they currently stand? Or is it when site rev, they apply for site review, or?
I might actually defer to CAO on that one. I'm not sure if the, when, when the state legislation takes place, if that automatically applies to projects, or if projects that, like if they apply for site review in May, would, would the parking requirement go away in July or not?
Yeah. So typically, and I would have to look exactly at this parking requirement, state law, I looked at it a long time ago, but typically, it does not apply to things that are already in process, so it's not gonna go, go back. So if they were to apply prior to the effective date in summer 2025, the parking requirement as it stands now would apply. If they apply after that date, though, it is likely that the new parking requirement will apply.
Okay, and when you say they apply, it's applying for site review?
Correct.
It's not based on the concept?
Yes. Based on the date of site review application.
Yeah, great. Okay, and then one other quick question. Would, so the, the current access, there, well, there is current access off 20th Street, and that's going to be the only access under the proposal. Would they be required to reconstruct that curb ramp and sidewalk and so on at 20th Street? Do you know?
I think so. I think that was a comment from our transportation engineering staff.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Laura? Claudia?
We'll get to you Laura, thank you. There was some concern in the memo that the open spaces being proposed are too small to provide meaningful gathering space. Could you give us any more information on what size those open spaces are being proposed at, and then what would staff consider to be an adequate size?
Yeah, that comment was made by Chris Ricardello, our landscape engineer, so I can't speak 100% to his intent. And I don't think that there's really a specific minimum size. I think his, the main concern was that this large open space area on the southeast corner of the building along Broadway is covered, so it's, it's not really an open area where you can see the sky. And then I think his, his concerns about the other ones were that they're just kind of enclosed in the building on nor, northern aspects of the building, so they might not get a lot of sun. Yeah, and that they're, I think he just thinks, thought they were too small to be super usable.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the building height, the additional criteria for the, for height modifications are, are pretty focused on outdoor open space and kind of providing like large usable spaces.
Yeah, so this, this larger kind of covered open space, do we have any, like, does that have any reference in the code? Like, I don't know that I've seen one of those before, I mean, we generally, yes, talk about uncovered open space.
Yeah.
What, what is that in terms of definitions, what they're proposing there?
You know, it's hard to tell based on the project plans if it's fully enclosed, or if it's like open-sided.
Okay.
I think, yeah, that's probably a question for the applicant.
Okay. And then a question about the transportation and circulation, again, dealing with that curb cut on Broadway. Are there any required connections through this property from Broadway? So assuming that curb cut were closed off, I know that provides vehicle access right now, is there any requirement to maintain bike or pedestrian access through this property or into the interior of the property from Broadway?
No, there are no connections through this property shown on the transportation master plan. There is a connection shown on the new Vista High School property. And I know that, and the applicant may be willing to speak to this or better able, but I know that the new Vista High School and the applicant have been in discussions at some point about potentially sharing costs of providing it or something like that, because new Vista probably isn't going to be building it anytime soon. It's a, yeah, so if you can, if you see here, it kind of, it basically trails the southern end of the property just on the new Vista High, High School property, and creates kind of a stairway shape. But there's a bunch of grade there, so it's a difficult connection to make. So we have, we've raised the issue of whether or not there's, you know, potential to add that multi-use path as part of this project, but it's not something that we can require of new Vista. That was maybe more than you asked, but, yeah, it's, it's an interesting topic.
Okay, yeah, that, I was not aware of that one at all, but that, the current connection, I guess it's kind of like a alleyway parking between the adjacent building, the Lux, and this proposed building. What is the status of that? Would that, would that remain there as a sort of alley access?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, the, I'm sorry, which connection are you talking about? The current existing?
So as I understand it right now, there's a curb cut on Broadway that serves both this property and the property immediately to the west called the Lux.
Yeah, yes.
Would that kind of alley vehicle access, whatever status it's in, does that remain?
I think that's something we'd have to determine during site review, because it's a little bit tricky, that basically half of the existing access would be closed.
Okay.
So the portion of the access on this property would be closed, but we couldn't require the Lux to close their portion. So if that stays open, there's a chance the Lux may want to do something with that very narrow space to the south, or there's a chance that they may want to keep it open.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other, Laura?
Just really quickly, the diagram shows a fifth-floor rooftop deck. I assume that's a carve-out from the fifth floor, not on top of the fifth floor?
That's actually, that is a good question as well. Nope, that's on the fifth floor, from what I could see in the plans.
On top of it? How can that be with a 55-foot building?
It probably can't. But again.
The applicant is.
Okay.
It's a carve-out, so it's actually sitting on top of the fourth floor. Okay, all right, thank you.
Page 106 in the packet.
Thank you Claudia.
Mason, any questions? Okay, all right, time for the, does the applicant have a presentation?
This is, I'm pulling up their presentation, I believe this is the document you wanted to share. Is that right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll need to promote them to panel.
Can we speak into the microphone? Go ahead and turn it on. Yeah, there you go.
Sorry about that. I think, yeah, Seth.
What is their name?
Seth is the owner, yeah, and he'd like to say a couple opening remarks.
Okay, I see him there now.
All right, good evening everyone. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Perfect, all right, and Chris, you're getting set up as well?
Chris, you go ahead and turn on your mic. There you go.
Yep, yep, I'm getting set up, sir, here Seth.
Okay, perfect. I'm just gonna share a few things here before Chris gets started. Seth Seko is my name, and I'm here on behalf of the development team. Just appreciate your guys' time tonight. I think this venue is a great one, where we can receive just productive feedback from all of you. We do believe that this will be a successful project for the city of Boulder. And before I get into more, I'd like to say just a thank you to Chandler and the staff for their work and input on the project to date. It's been very constructive and helpful. The concept that we've worked on putting together here focuses on just me and a number of growing needs of the city, as well as the university. It aligns with a number of key goals that are outlined in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. Chandler touched on a number of those in his presentation, and we've been tried, we've tried to be very just thoughtful in our approach of doing just that. I'm sure it's not lost on any of you that housing is a key responsibility of the city to help deliver accessible and appropriate opportunities to those that live within your jurisdiction there. This site in particular is well-positioned to meet the growing needs of the university. I spoke about this in the landmarks board hearing last week, but some of the projections from CU over the next five to 10 years is a very healthy growth projection on their enrollment. In our minds, it makes a lot of sense to continue to focus student housing right along the Broadway corridor, just given its connectivity and adjacency to the university. We believe this is a place for higher density when it comes to just that, the zoning supports it. A couple of side notes, we touched on landmarks approval for demo last week. We also did hold a neighbor meeting on September 5th at the library. We invited all the neighbors within, I think, the 600-foot radius that you had provided us with Chandler. Three of them did show up, and there were, I think, three of the five that had provided comments to you Chandler directly. So we had some healthy discussion, and they're able just to kind of go through the same slide deck that you guys saw earlier here. So I'll hand this over to you, Chris, here, but again, we just thank you guys for your time tonight and look forward to the feedback.
Thanks. I, I just wanted to let you know, we, you do time this, and you have about 10 minutes left.
I was just about to ask if there's a time limit or not, so, no, that's perfect. And, you know, I'll just echo real quick, you know, Seth's remark. I appreciate Chandler, your time, and the city staff for, you know, taking the time already and providing some, some meaningful feedback, and, you know, to the planning board staff in this late hour, appreciate, you know, in advance, the time we get to spend here tonight and the, and the discussions. Personally, this is one of my favorite parts of projects of this site. this is one of my favorite parts of projects of this size and this importance. It, you know, it's a great opportunity that we get to get together as a brain trust as we're kind of shaping this thing, you know, in its concept phase, you know, to discuss ideas and, you know, just how to make this project really sing at this location. So looking forward to the discussion here tonight. Next slide, please. A lot has been said about the location. You guys know where it is. Our team, the ownership team and the design team, you see about half of it, but we can talk through it. We understand the importance of the site. It's going to be a pretty visible site along the Broadway corridor. And there's a huge opportunity here to provide valuable student housing to the University Hill neighborhood in a location where, you know, essentially the access to multimodal transportation makes auto transportation pretty much unnecessary. And I think you guys have already started the conversation about parking, right? What does that mean now and what does that mean, you know, in the middle of next year? So currently, we are proposing, as Chandler mentioned, to add 63 units and 222-ish bedrooms to the housing stock right there next to the university. We talked about the proximity. There's, it's right across the street from the university, just south of University Hill, bus stops, the Basemar Shopping Center is just south. So, you know, in one of those incredibly walkable neighborhoods, incredibly tied into the fabric of the multimodal transportation. So I think we all know the benefits of the site there. Next slide, please. Seth touched on this a little bit. We are perfectly positioned here for student housing. It's in the, supports the purpose of the RH5 zone that Chandler talked about and the vision of the University Hill sub-community, right? What does that mean, right, in that plan? I think there's a two-paragraph blurb in the sub-community or the comp plan about that. And the first paragraph is to support the growth of the university by 2030. So I think this, this project is perfectly positioned to do that. So just to rewind it all the way back to the use, you know, we think that this is the best use for this site. Surrounded by, as Chandler, you pointed out, again, you do such a great job with these project introductions. Just to the south is the redevelopment of the high school, another larger building. To the northwest of the site, we have the San Marco condominiums all the way up to seven, eight stories, and the Luxe building there up to three stories, and then the larger footprint buildings across the street at the university. So, you know, in these respects, we believe that what we're proposing in terms of building size, massing footprint, you know, fits well within the context there. Next slide, please. These diagrams, I'll quickly go through that. I know that time's kind of running out here. First diagram shows the entire available form there regarding setbacks. The second diagram here is showing, I don't know, seem to be gaining time here.
You're, you've got six minutes, you're-
Okay, sounds good. It still shows nine here, but I don't know.
Oh, oh, that, anyway, I've got a timer going.
Okay, thank you. Second diagram just shows the maximum efficiency in the center L-shaped. Chandler, you talked about this, this odd kind of flag shape, you know, property shape here. So what we try to do is really make as much efficiency and density, you know, efficiently as we can in kind of that big L-shaped. Third diagram here is just how we erode that, right? How do we make meaningful, usable, open space? We talked about, you know, the back corner on the southwest corner, which is the top of this, you know, diagram facing the mountains. That's a roof deck that's on the fifth floor, not the roof, that has great views out to the mountains. And we erode some of the interior courtyards to gain light and air into the depth of that, that L-shaped block. So we've used private courtyards, we use semi, you know, public roof decks, and also trying to create some meaningful open space on the ground floor, which creates a little bit of physical and visual permeability to this mass and to this site. The fourth diagram here just shows a little addition of an amenity space right along Broadway that urbanistically kind of holds the Broadway frontage and creates a transparent, active space to energize that, the highly trafficked multimodal path along Broadway. And the fifth diagram there is the final form of the building. Next slide, please. We focused, you know, some major moves in this project, just for your, you know, kind of background regarding circulation and the location of the mass and the program on the site. The big move here was to close the 20-foot of that 40-foot curb cut along Broadway. The Luxe still does have access there. We essentially closed down ours. The vehicular access, as you pointed out, was from 20th Street to the west, so that will remain. The Luxe will retain access from Broadway and to the south through our property. The building mass, you might have noticed this, but we kept it 25 feet from the property line on the east side of the Luxe. So between the Luxe and our building, there's a larger gap there. And that's to reroute a storm sewer that I don't think we talked about. Maybe if you're on the Landmarks Board, that was a big discussion point, is to reroute that sanitary sewer that's essentially riding, currently running east-west and bifurcates the site. So that's going to be required to run that up and around the site. So that is what that larger 25-foot north-south kind of setback or easement will be. The main pedestrian access will be along Broadway, highlighted with a recess in the mass and a projecting canopy above it. And the long and short-term bike parking, again, a robust TDM. We realize that, you know, without the use of a car, with the parking reduction that we're proposing, you know, we've really got to, you know, provide long-term and short-term bike parking above what's going to be required per code. So we've put that out towards Broadway, easy access again to that multimodal path. Next slide, please. With open space, this is a hot topic. I mean, this, you know, comes up with every, every project, right? It's a fun challenge how to balance density, parking and open space, right? We always talk about this. This project is no exception. We do have additional open space requirements due to height modification. But again, it's been difficult, as you guys noticed. How do we provide 15% in addition to what's already required per code? We're proposing private courtyards on the west side that provide views and access to light and air to the bedrooms in the center of the mass. We're proposing the resident roof deck on the southwest corner. And on the east, again, is that large amenity space that is covered by the mass of the residential units above, which was a comment for staff, and that's why we've kind of highlighted it here in the diagram. To the question the board had, that is currently in this concept shown is kind of passed through, open on two or three sides. So just bounded by the mass on the north partially and on the west, but mostly open. We've been looking at ways to increase the amount of open space to respond to staff's comments. And so in the next slide, if you could go to the next slide, please, that shows those floor plans. Once again, I've highlighted, you know, an oval right where those residential units are above, and an opportunity there to move those to the west side. So they're not covering open space, they're now covering parking. And so what that's going to do, and I have some massing studies in, you know, in the spirit of concepts review, if you guys want to take a look at that, I have those at the end of the, end of the presentation here. So just looking at the floor plans, the ground floor, we have the circulation from 20th Street, auto circulation in under the building that wraps around and continues in a loop back out to 20th Street. The trash would be located on the west end, I think for obvious reasons there. And again, the bike parking and amenity spaces pushed out to Broadway to hold that edge. Upper floors, a mix of unit types, Chandler talked about that. Studios, two, three and five-bedroom units, so a good mix of those. And again, we talked about that option there to relocate the east mass to the southwest corner. That would really open up that big space to a, you know, kind of change that open space to a space that's open to the air and with south access, solar access there. Was that my time?
That's your time.
Okay.
Take, take a few seconds to wrap up.
You got it. You guys talked about a little bit, sorry, next slide, please. We're looking at a brick base, fiber cement up above, highlighting the entries and the building corners with, you know, that orange color, a little bit reminiscent of the terracotta roofs there at the university, and some spaces for, you know, some ideas for a project mural. If you could skip ahead to 13 of 16, this is really where I want to go with you guys. This shows two options. I know you haven't seen the bottom one before, but just looking at, you know, staff's comments, they're up at the top here. Make a larger, more meaningful outdoor open space, emphasize the building entry, increase the level of transparency on the ground floor, show a variety of forms and heights, and integrate balconies into the building mass. So those three ones in bold and the top are what we really focused on in this quick little sketch. We're reducing along Broadway, the fifth floor to a fourth floor now, along that gray mass where that red arrow is pointing down. And then this option is showing, raising up the Broadway elevation right above the amenity space to a second and third floor to really hold that Broadway elevation and to provide a datum that relates back to The Luxe. I think urbanistically, that's a better move there. So if you look at the bottom image there, if you go to the next page, please, you can see the change that that really has on the facade. You can see that big chunk up top that we had that was covering that open space is now gone, opens up that lower floor area for, you know, usable open space. And if you go to the next slide, please, you can really see in this image how it emphasizes a variety of masses along Broadway and really bring some prominence out to that Broadway edge for that second and third floor mass. So with that, I won't take up any more time, but open to questions and, you know, really looking forward to the dialogue, so appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Okay, time to field any questions to the applicant that you may have before we go to the public hearing. Anyone? Okay, Kurt?
Just following up about that east-side open space, there was a question about whether that is open. It appears that that would be open to the east and south and maybe partly on the north. Is that right?
Correct, so- Correct. So if you go to 14 of 16, you can kind of zoom in there. But yes, on the north side, it would be half-
Right.
-open on that east side, fully open on the east side, and fully open on the south.
Yeah.
Minus structure.
Okay. And have you modeled or measured or anything the noise levels from Broadway at that point?
I have not yet, no.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Mel, go ahead.
Yes, hi, thank you for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. Can you talk about the site plan and what percent of it is not paved?
I don't know right offhand.
It looks like it's about, you know, the setbacks are not paved, but minimally beyond that, it's pretty much paved? Does that sound about right?
Correct, yeah, with the exception of kind of that northeast side along the multimodal path.
Okay, thanks. Next question, just terminology-wise, what is podium parking?
It's essentially the building is raised up on a podium.
So it's tuck-under? It's under the building?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have any perspectives at the pedestrian level?
There should be the front entry, there's one on the cover sheet, and there's one on page 11.
That's not pedestrian level? Like if you're standing on the sidewalk or driving a car?
No, I think that that's the closest one we have.
So human scale, what does it actually feel like to have a five-story building here? We don't have any perspectives?
No, not currently.
Okay, perfect. Last question, how many bedrooms?
222.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mason, I can't see you, but do you have any questions for the applicant? Okay?
I do not.
Okay.
Did my video go out again?
No, it just, it just, don't, yeah. I just couldn't see you at that moment.
Gotcha.
Okay, go ahead, Laura.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. The application uses a bunch of different terminologies for open space amenities. It talks about a covered public amenity area, a private courtyard and a resident rooftop deck. What's the difference in the expected users of the public amenity area, the private courtyard and the resident rooftop deck?
Good question. Yeah, so if you think about it as kind of a scale from private, semi-private or semi-public to public, ground floor areas would be public, that covered open space there would be fully public, accessible to the public. Something that's, like that fifth-floor roof deck would be tenant-only, so semi-private or semi-public, however you want to look at it. And then the private courtyard would just be accessible to those units at that level, kind of like a walk.
So those are the second-floor roof, the second-floor roof decks are the private courtyards?
Correct.
So just the units around those?
Exactly.
And all the other units would have access to the rooftop deck on the top of the fourth floor, equal to the fifth floor?
Correct.
As well as the public amenity area? And when you say that's open to the public, you mean like anybody going down the multi-use path could wander off into your site and use the public area?
They could.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And could you show us again the difference between the covered public amenity area in the original diagrams and the new ones that you showed tonight?
Yeah, so if you go to 14 of 16, please. I don't know if you can zoom into the top one, right under the mural. So that's what the covered would look like. Currently, we have two ping-pong tables and a big fireplace in there. You know, who knows what that's going to be? That gives you an idea of the size there. And then below that, if you scroll down, please. You know, we took that whole mass and put it to the southwest corner, which opened up that, and right now I'm just showing a little perla there. So it'd still be a little bit shaded from the southern light. That'll get, you know, that'd get great eastern and southern exposure there and be open to the sky above.
Okay, so that's just to the west of all of that glazing on the ground floor?
Correct, yep.
Okay, and that's, you said, open on which sides?
So that one would be fully open on the south and the east. The north would be, would back up to the amenity space.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I have a couple. Do you lose units or bedrooms in that design, the lower design?
It's a great question. That's one that we're trying to juggle. Currently, we have to adjust the unit mix, but pushing all of the mass, not all of the mass, but the second and third-story mass out to that flagship, you know, kind of that flag shape, is not the most efficient, so.
Which design offers more units, more view? Which design, upper or lower, offers better views for more units?
Define better views. There's pretty good views to the university and-
Yeah, so I'm thinking, so this gets into the commentary section, but this site is particularly good views to the south because of the open Casey Fields, good, pretty darn good views to the west, especially on the upper floors, because of the- Good, pretty darn good views to the west, um, especially on the upper floors, uh, because of the proximity to the mountains and the height of the, uh, neighboring buildings, et cetera. So I'm thinking more southwest is where the best views are. But yes, looking at the university is also, uh, is a, is a beautiful campus. So, um, I'm thinking more of the south and west.
It's probably about even, right? Because that, you know, that flagship one that we're, we're proposing to move to the south, they already have views south. We're just moving them more south and over and they still have views to the, sorry, they still have views to the south. It's a hard question to answer.
Yeah. Did you do any concepts of overall site? Overall building design on that very odd shaped site? That more of the building was more of the face of the building was oriented towards the south and west. Like, you know, you, if you have a beach prop, odd shaped beach property, you know, the designers really orient towards, uh, beach views, et cetera. I, I think this sometimes is kind of the equivalent of that. Were there any other concepts that you had that, or is it that the site doesn't really allow that?
Not to get the density. Um, we did, you know, the big change that we did look at, you know, uh, before we came up with this concept was moving everything more parallel to Broadway. Uh, and so that didn't really make sense in terms of efficiency. Uh, and again, you're covering all of that open space, right, on the ground level. And so this, we think was the best move is to move everything over the parking, right? And, and if we reduce the parking requirements even further, that would only open up, you know, some more open space opportunities. Um, but that was the big move is to take advantage of that, you know, that efficient L, right? Kind of in the middle of the project. So that's never really changed.
Okay. I think that's it for questions for me. Any other questions? Okay?
Sorry, one quick one. Um, have you had any discussions with the Lux about closing that access point?
On our property or their property?
Um, so in the staff memo, it says, uh, staff is supportive of closing the existing access onto Broadway, but this is a shared use between properties and would require additional study and cooperation between property owners to close or modify the access way in any way. So I'm assuming that you need to talk to the Lux people about closing that access on Broadway.
Yeah, that'd be a good question for Seth, um, if you're still there. I don't know if you, you know, had conversations already.
I am, Chris. We, we have not gotten into the details of those conversations. But as I think, Chris, you noted in your presentation, the Lux has two access points, one off of Broadway and then one to the south that runs through our property here and both would remain in place. Uh, but no, we've not had detailed conversations about what would it take to close half of the Broadway access.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mason, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, just a quick one. I didn't see, um, in any of the drawings that I thought I'd ask. An open space, uh, that was in the, in the drawing that was just up, um, that's along Broadway, uh, and borders the, the school property. Is there any plans of additional enhancements to that open space like? Uh, I, I think I saw some tree plantings, but I'm thinking more like, uh, uh, architectural elements that might further activate it for use or use plan on keeping it grass and trees.
Well, I did, um, actually figure out that a full-size volleyball court will fit in that area with that big mask on. So that's an option. Um, but to your point, Mason, um, no, we haven't programmed that space yet. That would come with, you know, once we dial in to, um, see if we can get that open space down there, right? What we do with that, with a full landscape plan and where we put water quality, right? That's another one of those, those challenges is how do we, you know, where and how do we put water quality on the site? But yeah, full intentions, Mason, to make that a, a really special place to be.
Sure. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you to the applicant. We're going to move on to the public hearing. Uh, I don't think there's anyone here in the room. Uh, Thomas, is there anyone online that wishes to speak to this agenda item?
We just have one raised hand and that's Lynn Segal. Um, Lynn, I'll go ahead and give you permission to talk and then you will have three minutes to speak. Please go ahead.
I don't know if any of you have seen Mark Wallach's hotline about area three planning reserve. But any growth, there needs to be a growth moratorium in Boulder. This is utterly ridiculous. Our water supply can't handle this. That, that, this is just outrageous that you're, that you're even contemplating parking reductions and fifty-five foot height on this thing and the open space. These bodies need open space and they need to travel away from this to get it besides just the university. And they will build it and they will come. Our open space can't handle all of this. We're in huge deficit. People don't want to ultimately sit in their rooms after their education. They want to get out and enjoy themselves and they're going to get away from here. And I don't care if you have alternate modes or transit oriented demand. You know, developments, this is not what Boulder needs. This is an outrage. There's nine hundred and thirty bed, and now it's all, it's all the, all about the bedrooms. It's not units anymore. There were forty bedrooms here before, two hundred and twenty-two. The only saving grace I can say is that what the United States has done to Lebanon is getting, getting it back to him to get him the biggest bang for the buck for selling the space and leaving. He's in Beirut. He was getting bombed by our country. So that I can appreciate. But further development of Boulder, this, this Hobie Wagner should never have been demoed. That, that's the only soul of Boulder, that pyramidal structure on the top, the opens, the, the, the interesting lighting coming in there. This, this building, it's, it's, it's a sin. It is lit, you know, and I'm not religious to, to allow this kind of a development. But five stories and the argument being, oh, all the other large area, you know, large scale developments around it. No, that's the reason it needs to stay small. And you know, the sister project to this is the Law and Water Fund on Broadway and Baseline. And that should have been kept too, but that's demo, demo, demo. What is anyone going to come to Boulder for but to see more housing developments and higher skyscrapers? No, 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 no way.
Okay.
Thank you, Lynn. Uh, we have no other raised hands.
Okay. Um, I'm going to close the public hearing and we'll move on to comments from board members. Who would like to go first?
How do we want to do this? Do we want to do point by point or?
Um, Chandler, do you have a slide with the, uh, were there four or five key? Yeah, let's, let's do the four. And I, I, I have been in favor lately of just whoever is up, holds the floor, answers the question, provides their comments and, uh, rather than round and round and round for, uh, each of the questions. And, and if your answer to the question is yes or no, then that's, that's completely fine as well. Uh, we don't, we don't have to comment. Anyway, use your time wisely to, um, make your most important comments. And there's no shame in saying yes or no to any of the other items. Anyone? Kurt, you look good. You're fortified with some rice pudding there.
I'm fortified with some rice pudding, so watch out.
Okay.
Question number one, yes, I think that it generally, uh, complies with the goals, objectives and recommendations of the BVCP. Uh, I do have some specific, uh, feedback on the design. First off, the, as proposed, it shows only a single, as I understand it, it shows only a single pedestrian, uh, access off the multi-use path, the Broadway multi-use path. That it doesn't look particularly, um, direct. Whether you're going to the northwest, in other words, like towards the intersection of Twentieth and Broadway or to the southeast, like towards the underpass, uh, that, that leads to the law building and so on. And so, um, the, um, nine to fourteen H two A is a provision in, uh, site review criteria that speaks to efficiency and directness of pedestrian, uh, accesses. And so I, I would like to see or I think that the site review criteria would be more consistent with the design. It shows more efficient, basically two separate ex, pedestrian accesses, one northwest bound and one southeast bound. Uh, I have some concerns about that east side open space area that we've been discussing primarily from the standpoint of the proximity to Broadway and the amount of noise and pollution and so on. Uh, from the vast number of cars going back and forth on Broadway. And so I, I think that it would benefit significantly from some kind of, if it's to remain in that location, and I don't know of a better location, uh, some kind of, uh, screening to protect from those, those, the, the, the noise and, and pollution and so on that I talked about. Or, you know, if you can come up with anything else. I just, I'm worried that that's not going to be a very appealing spot if it's just wide open like that. Staff, one of the staff comments was consideration should be given to how to increase the level of transparency and sense of connection to the public realm along the Broadway frontage. And I agree with that. There's a lot of glazing shown, um, which is great, but it feels very commercial. It, it almost, I don't know, it feels like it's a one-story office building there. So I think that, um, ways to detail it, uh, to make it more appealing and more approachable would be better. Maybe, maybe changing the fenestration somehow or some other, uh, detailing. And then, um, let's see, there's a, also a staff comment about consider adding, please consider adding simple detailing to the facade using elements described above. Um, and I agree, but one thing that staff did not mention was the criterion about simplification, simple materials and colors. So the site review criteria say the number of building material types is limited and the building materials are applied to complement the building form and function. And it appears to me that there's, there's a lot of different colors. There's some different materials, but I don't, I'm not really seeing rhyme or reason in it. And it's, it feels a little bit gratuitous. And I think that there could be fewer materials, fewer colors, but better use of detailing. Um, uh, at a more subtle level that would make it more elegant and more cohesive, coherent. Uh, and then last, just in terms of the, the multiple, the, the, the alternative proposals that you showed. Uh, I think that that new proposal with the, with the massing moved from above the, the open space to the west and then additional height along Broadway. I think that that could be quite successful. I, I think that the, as the, in the proposal that we got, there's the one-story section right along Broadway. And then there's the five-story section and, um, and I think that that it works, but I think that the greater, the two-story section and the, the three-story section and so on. It just, um, to me, it feels like it works a little better and is more consistent with the site review criteria, which talk about a variety of forms and heights. So those are, that was all in response to number two. Uh, number three, I support the parking reduction. I think that that's appropriate. And I think that the proposed height of fifty-five feet is appropriate.
Okay, Laura.
Thank you, Kurt. Thank you, Mark. Um, so I would say for one, yes, I think it is generally consistent with the BVCP goals and objectives and recommendations. Two, feedback on the conceptual, uh, site plan and building design. I, I thought, uh, staff made very good comments in the packet and I did not see a one that I disagreed with. I think you'd be served well to pay close attention to staff's comments there, um, because I would support them all. Uh, I would be very concerned if that Broadway access remains open. Uh, the first time that I, uh, saw the site here, I was like, oh, what the heck are they going to do about that Broadway access? Because that's going to be a mess if there's a bunch of people using it and trying to make left turns there, either in or out of the site. Uh, I live in South Boulder and I use that multi-use path a lot. And so I would be very concerned about, um, a lot of cars going across Broadway there, um, and across the multi-use path there. As far as the proposed parking reduction, I do think that's very appropriate. But I think you can anticipate that this board will look very, very closely at your TDM plan. I appreciated the, um, initial comments that you put in there about that. And I would suggest a couple of things. Number one, we have seen projects come through where, uh, student projects in particular, where the tenants are required to show that they have a parking space if they're going to bring a vehicle. Or if they do not show that they have a parking space, that they, um, uh, promise that they're not bringing a car, basically. So I don't know if you're planning for your parking spaces to be assigned or unbundled or how are you going to do that? But to somehow guarantee that if people bring a car, they have a place to put it, either on your property or somewhere else. Uh, consider that as a lease term. Um, and I think one of our applicants had their parents co-sign that lease. So, um, that seemed to be, uh, we didn't follow up to see how successful that was by life, that model. With the bike parking, we bring this up a lot. Think about the future of biking, being a lot of e-bikes and cargo bikes. Um, so it can't just be all hanging bike racks for bicycle long-term storage because it's almost impossible to wrestle those big heavy bikes up there. And I know Mark in particular will probably have comments about bike charging, um, and electrical vehi, electric vehicle charging. So think about those in your TDM plan. And I also, I don't know if we have any data citywide about what kinds of modes of transportation, alternate modes that students use the most, whether that's the buses, whether that's like micro-mobility, like scooters, if it's bikes and e-bikes, mono wheels, walking. But whatever data that we have, I would encourage you to use that to think about where do you put your resources in providing, um, alternate modes for folks? The more you can talk about that, the happier we will be. So those are the TDM plan comments. I have no problems with the fifty-five foot height. I think it is appropriate for this neighborhood, especially along that, um, you know, Broadway is a major north-south drag through, through Boulder. And you're right there by baseline. Um, there's so many opportunities here for, uh, being along a multimodal transit corridor that parking reductions are very appropriate and that additional height of fifty-five feet is very appropriate. And I don't think I have anything else. I, I would, when we are done with the applicant, like to make two comments for staff that this brings up for me that are larger than this project, but I don't want to take the applicant's time for that.
Great. Thank you, Laura. Remind me of that after we're done with this. Claudia.
Thank you to both Kurt and Laura for getting this started. I will agree with much of what they said, uh, but. I will agree with much of what they said, uh, but I will go question by question. So first, um, is the plan generally, um, in line with the BBCP? Yes, I think this is a good location for high-density student housing and infill development. Some thoughts on site design, um, I want to build a little bit on Kurt's comments about access from Broadway. I would really encourage you, as you continue to refine this, to think about the best access for bikes and pedestrians as being very different from that for cars. Um, and that bike connection to Broadway, um, is going to be a very important part of your connectivity and realizing your TDM goals. I did see in your diagrams that you are putting the long-term bikes, bike storage closer to Broadway. I assume that does include some direct access, so folks don't have to be going all the way around to that 20th Street side. So I hope that is part of the final plan, but I would also encourage you to think about pathways around and through this property, moving folks between Broadway and 20th. Some of that is informal, informally there right now in terms of the alleyways. And I'd like to find ways to continue to encourage that movement and permeability. Um, in terms of a parking reduction, this is a great place and population for asking for a large parking reduction. As my colleague Laura said, um, we will still be looking for a very robust transportation demand management plan. Um, and I would hope that would include strategies for managing, uh, your parking supply, including potentially payment or other restrictions. And then on the question of height, um, I think a 55-foot height is completely appropriate for this use and in this location, as long as you are prepared to meet those additional open space and community benefit criteria, um, in our code. I really do appreciate, um, seeing those hints of flexibility that you're already working on the open space problem in terms of moving, building, massing around. I look forward to seeing how that evolves. And I also share concerns that have been shared here already about the kind of concentration of open space on the east side of this project, um, as it's currently designed. I'm not as worried about, um, shade as staff is perhaps, but definitely concerned about how noise and proximity to traffic is going to impact the usability of space. And so we're gonna be looking not just at your square footage in the end, but also, you know, how is that space usable by residents? Thanks.
Great, thank you. Uh, ML, go.
Yep. Thank you. Let me see, I will go through these issues as well. Let me see the, um, number one, BBCP. I think all my concerns have been answered regards to that, and I have no, um, concerns with that criteria being met. Feedback on conceptual site plan and building design, number two. Um, I will just identify the criteria, um, numbers and the salient piece with it. So, um, regards to site design, 2A V, minimize the amount of pavement necessary. The question I had asked was, "Is the entire site paved except for the setbacks?" And the answer was essentially yes. So I will be interested in, in the next phase to see, are we using the minimum amount of, of pavement that is necessary to accomplish the, uh, the goals of access on that property? 2B, 1 and 2, open space. I think everybody has spoken about open space. This requires it to be usable and to meet the needs of the residents. So one of the questions I would have is, if you have some of the open space, given the way this open space is calculated, that it's for the entire site. But some of your open space you proposed was limited to only the people that lived on that floor. I'm not sure how that would meet the, um, meeting the needs of the residents and being usable. So that would be one thing. But I think that i- in general, the staff has made a lot of points regards to that, and I would, I would, um, be looking for that to be addressed. Uh, regards to the building siding and design, um, 3B 1, um, it talks about, uh, when you have a larger floor plate building, have a variety of forms and heights. One of the statements that is made is that the building is all at 55-foot high. So we do not have the, we're not meeting that variety of forms and heights. 3B 3, um, and I think the staff pointed this out, the building windows creating visual interest. 3B 4, simple detailing incorporated into the facades to create, again, visual interest. I believe the, the staff brought that up as well. So that's regard to number two. Number three, feedback on the parking reduction. You know, it's always, um, we like the idea that we're transitioning away from, uh, cars as, as transportation, but we're not there yet. And I, we've approved so many projects where it's, um, student housing with a greatly reduced parking. And, um, I don't know that we have data or facts as to, is it working? Are the neighborhoods not getting overrun? And, um, in fact, are the students not bringing cars? So I, I agree with some of my peer, uh, my fellow board members that we'll need to see some good TDM, um, uh, data and strategies there so that, that neighborhood doesn't get packed up. We've got the high school, we've got the university. There's a lot of, um, there's a lot of pressure on street parking if the inhabitants of this don't have any place to put their cars, and in fact, they do have cars. So that's, that's a challenge. Number four, the proposed building height. The criteria for height modification, I believe that there's a number of them that, that need to be addressed. For one, I think it would be great when you come back to offer, uh, perspectives at the pedestrian level. Five stories, 55-foot high is big. You are blocking some substantial views of the flatirons with this building, and I think it will be important to see a view from both a car and, and a person. This is a big, big building, and I don't know that, you know, we've really talked about that to any length here, but, um, so looking at, for A1, that talks about building length, and I think that that needs to be, um, considered as you come back. For A2, um, building facades, uh, along a public street. For B1, B3, that's the one that deals with views. And I think you would ma- be able to make your point and talk to that one, looking at, uh, some perspectives from the pedestrian. Because if you go there now, if you take some before and after pictures at the, go there now and take a picture as a pedestrian on that site, or across the street, or in a car, you have substantial views of the flatirons. And I think you will see that they are gonna be, um, essentially gone. And i- it's important, when we look at, uh, a 55-foot building that is continuously 55 feet, that has a big impact on the experience of, of us people that aren't gonna be living there, that are gonna be driving past it and/or walking or biking. So it'd be good to see what is that impact, um, plus to meet that criteria. And again, the 4BIB4, again, that talks about open space and site design. So, um, those are criteria that need to be met, and so I, that's why I gave them by number. So that it's, it's not, um, uh, it's not nebulous. And then on number five and the key issue, um, you're proposing 222 bedrooms. And so I, I guess this is a question both for, or a, a comment. How is that utility impact, you know, being calculated, given that we've got 222 bedrooms there? This isn't as though it's a five-bedroom apartment, you know, a family with five bedrooms. This is five adults, or I don't know how many people are allowed to live per room. So I, I think that that's a big impact, and it would be interesting to see, to make sure that the, um, impact to the, uh, water use is, uh, takes into account the, the users and, and how this site is, um, going to be using those resources. Yeah, so that's all five, that's all five key issues, and, um, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ML. Mason, do you have any comments, please?
Yeah. So on point one, uh, yes. I'm not kinda going, I'm gonna try to save a little time and go quick and just focus on what's important. Number two, um, I'm not quite, I, I, I think that staff had a lot of great comments, again, um, that I agree with. I'm not as worried about the, the shade. I'm also not quite as worried, um, as some of my other colleagues about, uh, the noise of, of Broadway. I mean, I've seen lots of people hanging outside along Broadway. I know the traffic gets a little faster there, so it might be a little different. And I would be happy if the green space was moved more inward, I think, mainly because I think it's important for, um, for us to be, uh, working on designs that integrate the people who live in this building with the community. And there's a lot of density in that area. There might be opportunity to, instead of focused on integrating with whoever's using the multi-use facet, path at the time, to be integrating it with the community, uh, around them. I don't know if there's an opportunity to do that. It looks like that might be really challenging based on the shape of the, the lot. But, uh, just thought I'd throw that out there. As far as, I do think that the current design could benefit from exploring ways to create more, um, difference in height. Uh, I do, uh, not worried about the 55-foot height limit. You know, that kinda jumps me to number four, but I, I do feel like it's a, the massing is, is kinda start. And it'd be nice to have that broken up a little bit more. I know that you've heard that before, and I really do appreciate how thoughtful you were in the, uh, second option that you provided. Looked like you were already taking these comments to heart and making some adjustments. So I'll be excited to see what you come back with in Site Review. Uh, number three, um, 57% seems completely, uh, appropriate here, as others have mentioned. Uh, very close to, um, lots of amenities, to the schools, to the multi-use path. It would be very easy to be car-free, um, in this area, I would think. But as others have mentioned, and just to reiterate, a strong TDM plan, careful consideration of those alternate, um, with its transportation, whether it's increased, uh, facilities for, for bicycles of a lot of varieties, secure, uh, storage, you know, uh, uh, eco-passes, things of that nature are gonna be really important in Site Review. I'm sure, I'm sure you're thinking about these things. Uh, number four, um, I've already mentioned, I think 55 feet is appropriate largely here. It's in this area, uh, it's right across from the school. I think it's something that's needed. And then, you know, we've already, other folks I think have already touched on the requirements for getting that exception, so I don't think I need to go any more detail there. I have nothing for number five. So, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mason. Okay, um, uh, it's, it's difficult to make comments after everyone has, has made them, and they are so pertinent and useful, and I, uh, certainly honor all of them. And, um, in particular, so, uh, I'm gonna go down the list real quick, and then I, I'm gonna do just a little bit more of a narrative. Okay, so one, yes, it meets the, uh, objectives and recommendations of BBCP. I'll talk about site design in a second. The parking reduction is fine, and I think it, if there was ever going to be an adjustment, it would be maybe even less parking and more open space. I don't have a problem with the 55-foot height, although ML's comments about, uh, variation in that height and, and how we use that height, some of that was, was, I thought was very pertinent. I, I think what I want to tell you as applicants tonight is that, uh, in this review, I think you've seen unanimity here on the board, and my personal reading of staff's recommendations, uh, and the way they read this application, is that, um, I, this is maybe the, I've never been more in agreement with staff than, than this particular application, and you would do well to heed their recommendations, and, and you've demonstrated some of that already. That's great. Um, but, you know, it is better to err on the side of, uh, hearing us and hearing staff than to come to Site Review and have some, uh, change made at 11:30 that is a surprise to you, or, it shouldn't be a surprise, because we, we really voiced something strongly at Concept Review. So, uh, you know, it's your project, but when you come back to Site Review, we, we will, um, be looking for a really robust TDM plan. And don't let whoever you use as your TDM consultant use the 2011 draft TDM toolkit. Don't, don't do that. It, it, it's ill, it would be ill-advised. I can't say, "Don't do that." I wouldn't advise it. I would approach your TDM plan with the question of, "How many things can we do to keep people arriving, from arriving in a car?" And just play that game, uh, you know? And so when I look at, uh, again, concept reviews are tough, because, um, it's a concept review, and you don't have a lot of details. But, you know, Laura talked about, uh, hanging bike racks versus ground bike racks. Do you have charging for your bikes? Do you have a, um, you know, shared ride pickup and drop-off location? Do you have planned, uh, place for, um, shared vehicles? You know, so I, I, you know, two or three car shares on a building like that, maybe four or five car-share spots. And that's an amenity you, you offer. Are you, are you practicing Sump principles, separated, unbundled, managed, paid parking? If you come back here and you, you aren't, and your parking is included in units, which obviously with a 57% parking reduction, that would be hard, but it, it, that, that won't read well with us. So, uh, and I think the other thing is, is we've all talked about open space, and rather than say, uh, anyway, it's critical in this project, and I think you have this asset of these south and west views, and, um, you know, a couple feet closer or an adjustment to Broadway isn't gonna make any difference on sound. But several more feet and, uh, more, hundreds of more feet of open space on that south and west side, I think can really make a difference for people, uh, who reside in that building. And, um, I agree with ML's comments, or whoever's it was, that the, um, when you have open space that is only accessible by some residents, but it's not a balcony with, you know, just for that unit, that, that, I think that's tough for people. So, anyway, I would, uh, I would caution about that, and just to make sure your, your open space is, uh, is really a place, especially with five-bedroom units, because you've got five college kids. You know what? They're gonna need to get out and away from their roommates, um, some, and have a, have a place to do it versus a concrete courtyard. So, um, and, and I also finally want to conclude, just design-wise, that with buildings of this height, with en masse, that, uh, like Kurt talked about, simplification, but better detailing. You know, and, and I, in other recent concept reviews, we've talked about, um, uh, cement siding can be fine, but it can also be just if it's, if it's not detailed enough, if it's too large, too big a surface area, extends for too far, then i- it really can really be quite ugly. So, uh, and while it's cost-effective, uh, it, it can be really detrimental. So I think that does it. But yeah, listen, listen to the great comments that have been made in staff's review, and thank you very much. Okay? Yeah, did you, okay, we, we, usually it's after, right after the public hearing and responding to the public. But if you have any responses to us, you're welcome to spend a minute or two and, uh, But if you have any responses to us, you're welcome to spend a minute or two and, uh, but it's not required.
Yes, the only question, follow-up question, I think, some of you, to it, but, you know.
Could you turn your mic on for the recording?
Yep, um, I think the only question, you started to allude to it. You know, would the board be supportive of a larger parking reduction if it meant more open space? Especially given the, you know, what's coming down, you know, um, in the next year and a half with possibly eliminating all parking requirements. Uh, it seems like we could get away from a lot of the paved area, turn that back to grass, where we can do plantings, screenings, that kind of thing. Um, just curious to hear your thoughts on that.
I'll, I'll, I'll go and say, sure, especially if, you know, um, I think, uh, sacrificing, uh, a, a couple of units here or there for more rooftop deck or, um, uh, pulling back to the, um, from the south and west, create more open space. So you reduce cars, and I, I'm not advocating a, a big reduction in units or a reduction in height, but I think, um, a careful balance there, uh, I would support that. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would support that. I think that there is pretty much no more appropriate place in the city for a very significant parking reduction, given, as I think it was Claudia was pointing out, not just the location, but also the demographics of the, of the people who will be here. So I think that that would be appropriate, and certainly, you know, we've, we've expressed some concerns about the open space. So if it really means significantly, not, not just more, but higher quality open space, I think that that would be a great trade-off.
Laura?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna largely agree and say, um, two things. One, it is all about the quality of the open space, right? So if, if what you're doing is eliminating parking spaces in a tuck under parking garage and turning that into open space as like adjacent to a tuck under parking garage and maybe part of it, not as interesting. Um, but if it's quality, grassy, usable, really, really usable open space, then, then yes, I'd be all for it. Um, and the second thing is, is really back to that TDM plan. Like, we need to know that if the parking is being reduced on your site, it's not just being pushed out to where neighbors are going to be complaining about it because the, the neighborhoods are being blocked up with cars. So, um, things that you can do to, to really demonstrate that a, a real reduction in vehicle trips, in car storage, that your tenants are not bringing cars.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick follow-up? Has the board, going back to data regarding that, because this has been a huge conversation with, I think I even asked Chandler, well, you know, what is it? What's the most effective way, right? If it's, I, I don't want to provide, you know, a car share or a, you know, a spot for, um, you know, kind of landing, um, ego scooters or blanking on the name there, but, you know, shoot, scooter sharing, right? Uh, where we could use it for open space, or planted open space, like, what's the, what's really effective? Do you guys have any data or any insight, right? We're kind of, seems like we're kind of grasping it, what really works? Um, you know, we, we have a project up in Crested Butte, and, you know, we're providing, um, spaces for cargo bikes, right? Big spaces, we've got the vertical, we've had, um, you know, horizontal as well. We've had, uh, the discussion about, um, plugs in the bike sharing or the, you know, bike, uh, enclosure, or are people just gonna charge them up in their rooms, right? There's a fire hazard associated with that as well. So where do we put those things? Is there, um, are people using bike tool, you know, little stands? Um, long-winded way of saying, do you guys have any data? What are you seeing, like, on the ground, boots on the ground, what's, what's really working or what we should avoid?
So, so we, the planning board, are seven volunteer community members, so we do not personally have data. You would have to get that from the city, so, um, and if the city wants to respond.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, Chris Haglin would be more than happy to talk to you about, uh, optimal TDM strategies, I'm sure.
Yeah, okay. Perfect, thank you. Um, that with these big parking reductions, that you kind of have to, that the, um, that my emphasis has been on hardware, uh, uh, and, and I mean that by, uh, charging hardware for cars, for bikes, um, hard, places for scooters, places for, um, big cargo e-bikes, places for bike shares, uh, rather than a reliance on the, the softer, we're gonna give eco-passes, which, which the students already have eco-passes anyway. Um, but the, uh, building, going ahead and investing in, in the places, the things that make using all of those alternatives easier. And, you know, walk around at sites that, uh, you know, when you walk around campus or you, or you ride your bike around campus, and you start looking at where scooters collect and how they're, how they're stored places, and who's riding a personal one versus who's riding, um, a, a rental one. Anyway, uh, you know, you can, you can see patterns. Um, it's, it's kind of like, uh, you know, when, when people put in a sidewalk, and then everyone cuts across the grass in some other way, it's like, well, just, let's, let's just figure out where they're really gonna go. So anyway, just, um, I think you can be, uh, pretty aggressive in your TDM plan, and it'll, it'll, it'll work out, but yeah, don't, um, don't give credence to, too much credence to the car.
And yeah, well, certainly the city, Chris Haglin, and, um, maybe some other people at the city will have great data, but also there are consultants who specialize in this and are great. Uh, we get a lot of TDM plans from one consultant engineering firm out of Kansas City or something. Don't use them. Um, Nelson Nygaard is a world leader in studying, what's that? I can't talk about this?
Well, I don't, I don't know that we need to be recommending consultants.
Okay. Choose a consultant that has expertise in this area as opposed to just the cheapest.
Okay, I think.
I don't know, Seth, did you have any? I don't want to lose track of him on the.
No, I'm here, Chris, and I'm good, thank you guys.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna close that agenda item. Yep. Oh, yeah, please, Laura, go ahead.
Sorry, just, just really quickly for staff, uh, two things that we've talked about in the past that came up again for me with this application. One turned out not to be relevant, which is the whole landmarking question, but I, I do want to say again that, um, I know that in the code in the BBCP, plant, it says that planning board, uh, can be the authority that basically as a part of site review, makes it a condition that the applicant has to apply for landmarking. And I have expressed in the past that I would be extremely reluctant for planning board to do that because that is basically a de facto landmarking. Um, if the applicant voluntarily asks to be landmarked, they will be landmarked. So if we make them do that, we are basically making them landmark themselves. So the only condition under which I would be comfortable doing that is if landmarks board has already looked at the project and said, "This project is of such great architectural, historical value" that, um, we are comfortable with that, with saying we would landmark it over their objection. And so I know there have been some things to work out in terms of sequencing, consulting with landmarks board, and bringing a site review forward that would need to be worked out at a staff level of how that process works. So I, I don't know if that's been worked on at all or thought about more, but I, I still have that concern. And so if a project ever comes to us with a request that we, as the planning board, ask the applicant to landmark, I would want to know that that had been worked out ahead of time. So I'm just gonna put that out there and remind that that is a huge concern for me and is going to continue to be. Um, I don't know if you want to respond to that, but I can say my second point that I wanted to bring up is just, um, this idea that when we provide a height modification and we ask for community benefit in the form of that inclusionary housing, uh, bonus square footage, that, that we found out quite recently that that does not include rooftop deck square footage. And I had suggested that we think about some kind of compensation for the fact that the applicant is getting a benefit from that rooftop deck, even if it's not residential square footage. It's an amenity for their residence, it helps them meet their open space requirement, that that should not just be a freebie, basically, that there should be some, um, benefit back to the city for providing that benefit of the rooftop deck. So just gonna lay that out there again, that, that's not the rules right now. We can't hold this application to it, but I would love to see staff think about that and maybe, um, bring forward some kind of adjustment to the inclusionary housing, um, bonus square footage calculation.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, now we're gonna close this item.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
So we have a couple of quick matters tonight. Um, and if I could take them out of order, the first, since we're, we're, we're right next door to Fairview High School, which if you've been by there recently, it looks dynamite, and the board actually, under the state statute, had the purview to review the, um, New Vista High School, I'm sorry.
I was like.
It's getting late, yeah, New Vista, since we're right next door to New Vista. The board got to review that, um, and so did council as part of kind of the state statutes and their process for, um, their new facilities. So in keeping in that vein, um, we were approached by the school board recently. Uh, they'd like to add two small sheds to their property next door. Um, so we were wondering if the board wanted to request a hearing, um, to review those sheds. You don't have to, but we're required to give you the option. Thank you, Chandler.
ML?
Um, Charles, how big are these small sheds?
Real quickly?
Yeah.
We really don't want you to request that.
And I don't know how big they are. We wanted to see if you guys.
I, I, I saw the site plan, they're very small, yeah.
They're very small.
Let me see if I can find them real quick.
And my second question was gonna be, do you guys have any concerns with them?
No, we do not.
Yeah.
And again, everything looks really good out there. If you've been out there recently, it, um, it looks great.
Yeah, I have no, I have no need to have us look at it.
Kurt?
My experience is that our review is of school projects is kind of pointless anyhow. They ignore us.
We, we could have a long discussion about that, but I think there's the opportunity for actual projects for us to make meaningful comment and, and de facto put them in a position politically to, you know, defer to city comments. We can have that conversation at a retreat.
I, I have no need to spend their time or ours talking about small sheds, but I appreciate the procedural, um, exactness and that you have raised the fact that we could request that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't either, okay. Okay, all right, next.
Um, I think it was the nomination for a participant for the.
Yeah, I can follow up. Uh, the sub-community, uh, boy, it's late, subcommittee for the, uh, process subcommittee for the Boulder Valley Conference. And so just a reminder that this is not, uh, dealing with substance whatsoever. This would be simply reviewing staff's, um, planned schedule for outreach, for the sequencing of the four-body review when that comes around towards the end. Uh, anticipate will may, maybe four or five times maximum. So we are looking for a single representative from each of the four groups and asking for that tonight.
I nominate Laura.
I second that nomination. Is there, is there, does anyone, uh, does any other board member, uh, have an interest in, in this position? I know you do. Okay? All right, then, um, I propose that we all say yes to, uh, to Laura being our representative, if she'll do it for us.
I object, no, um, I, I would gladly do it. Thank you for the nomination and the second. So if folks are comfortable with that, I would happily do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? No other matters? Okay, any, any other matters from the board? Okay.
I, I just want to say a big thank you to staff, and the applicant has left, but if they watch the tape, thank you to the applicant. Thank you to staff, um, thank you to Carl in absentia. We've had some great discussions tonight, and I think it is reflective of the very high caliber of work that you guys bring to us. And I really appreciate this board, I think we have robust discussions. I know it's late at night, but I, I really do think that we've done good work here, and I appreciate everybody.
Okay, great, we're adjourned.